Calling this town council meeting to order on Monday, September 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
On the Pledge of Allegiance, you may apply to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is
Agenda item two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steve.
We have a quorum. Agenda item number three, vote to enter into executive session pursuant to match General Watch Chapter 38, Section 21(c)(3), to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the matter of Donald Zelensky versus the town of Southbridge, which if discussed in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and to return to open meeting. Toma.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
And Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Therefore, we'll move into executive session. Would I call this meeting back to order? Counselor Jovan, you wish to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'd just like to ask, make a motion to waive the rules to just change a couple of agenda items just for flow. Would ask that we move the agenda item 11 to immediately after Citizens Forum, which would be placed before the disposition of the Zelensky dog matter, given how long it may take for that matter, given the previous discussion, and also that item 14 be moved right after the item 11 and then go to disposition of the Zelensky matter after that.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Agenda item four, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes Monday, September 13th, 2021. Toma.
Second.
Any discussion, any changes, additions, deletions? I'd just like to add that in agenda item number six, Chairman's announcements, that the third bullet, Police and Fire Department did an outstanding job with storm preparedness in response, I also mentioned the DPW. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Agenda item five, Subcommittee Reports, General Government, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight that I will discuss a little bit when we get to the agenda items. The agenda item number 14, 15, and 14, 15, number 22, and number 23.
Very good, thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a DPW Subcommittee meeting on September 21st, 2021. Items we discussed are on tonight's town council meeting, agendas item 18 through 21. Committee also had discussion concerning various streets and street opening permits. Our next meeting is next week, September 29th, 6:30 PM. We will be discussing the change order and survey services for the Page Hill and Clements Hill Road Improvement Projects, a grant application for forestry stewardship, also further discussion on Ellis Road and street opening permits. Thank you.
Very good. Education, Inaugural Services, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report, however, we do have a meeting scheduled on October 21st. We'll have the school receiver in for the following agenda items. He will update us on the school opening in the October report, that's when the report goes in for student enrollment, as well as their COVID response. Also discussion on budget format, the status of the current budget, and how the council would like to work with him to develop what we want to see in his budget for the next fiscal year. And also, we'd like to start preliminary discussions on the school facilities. This is not a capital planning type issue, it's really the school facilities and how the town can work with the school department in that it's going to be all encompassed with a bunch of different other things, but it's just a preliminary discussion to start that off. If anybody else has anything else they'd like to bring for the receiver, let me know, and we'll get there, but it's on October 21st. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have not had a meeting, so nothing to report at this time. We do have a meeting scheduled for October 12th, 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
We had a meeting last week, and we have recommendations on agenda item number 16 and 17. Next meeting date is the September 29th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. Update on year two goals and objectives for the town manager, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update, and hopefully we'll get this wrapped up this week with the town manager. Counselor Steve and I met this week, we've had some issues getting scheduling and getting everybody to the table. However, Counselor, Steve and I took all the recommendations or the ideas that had come out of our regular meeting, as well as some correspondence that have been sent to us. We have three areas that we're looking to set up with the town manager. The first would be personnel and financial, with the goal of implementation of the Human Resources, the Town Hall Reorganization Plan, so that'd be the implementation of that. And then, item two is communications, because there was some talk about documents in Spanish, the website improvement, and how to increase participation in town municipal government and boards. And finally, the third one is the big one, which would be infrastructure and asset management, the bullet points in that, and we're working to fine tune what the expectation and results would be, but the first one would be to develop strategy for implementation of alternatives to the current curbside collection program to be implemented in March of 2024, which is a big issue that we have to tackle. Develop and present the town of Southbridge plan to comply and implement the MS4 Stormwater Regulations. And the last three ones that were ongoing from the former town manager, that we would really like to try to button up at least to get some kind of plan in place, would be the review and analysis and recommendations to us on the town facilities study, the Southbridge Building and Grounds Management Study, and the Southbridge School Facility Study. So that's where we're at on that. If anybody has any questions, feel free to talk to me afterwards, but that's where we're at, and hopefully we'll have that all wrapped up for approval for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Item number six, Chairman's announcements. I have two quick announcements. Number one, I'd like to congratulate the Southbridge Business Partnership and the various community sponsors who contributed time, talent, and funds for a wonderful Autumn Fest held a week ago Saturday. It was a beautiful day, couldn't have asked for anything better. I've heard that upwards of 2,500 people were there at various points during the day. Everyone had a good time, there's a lot of good food, a lot of fun, good music, and an activity that really puts Southbridge's best foot forward. So again, congratulations to all those involved. Secondly, I'd like to notify the people in town that the new ladder truck was delivered this morning. It's a $1.1 million truck, I believe. It's a very impressive piece of fire apparatus. It won't be in service right away, as everyone needs to be trained on it, all the firefighters and the call force and the auxiliary force, so it probably won't be in service for a month or so, but you'll be seeing it around town, I'm sure, on training exercises, and it's quite impressive. Thank you, that's all I have. Item number seven, Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like you, I had the opportunity to view the new ladder truck this morning. It's an impressive piece of equipment. They actually had it out, working with the ladder, they had it up going up to the top of the fire station today, this morning, so it is a beautiful piece of equipment. I wanted to let the council know that last week we received eight responses to the request for qualifications towards the owner's project manager for the fire station project, so I'm working with Chairman Jovan as well as the Fire Station Building Committee. We're meeting on a regular basis to review those and select candidates to come in so that that project gets underway. The only other item of note, I did receive a note of thanks from Severina Rios on behalf of a lot of the Latino community here in Southbridge. She wanted to thank us for recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month and thanked the council for having her in, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Item number eight, Presentation on 25K Street in Southbridge by Chip Norton of Franklin Realty. I'm sorry?
May I pull my mask down?
Sure. Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. For those who don't know me, my name is Chip Norton, the manager and owner of the Southbridge Innovation Center, and here tonight to discuss a specific project, the redevelopment of 25K Street. For those who aren't familiar with the property, this is the former American Optical complex I've been involved in since the late 1990s with the development of the Hotel Conference Center. It's a site of 1,002 square feet, 1.2 million, 150 acres, about 20 acres of developable land, and I'm about halfway through the project at this point. I've developed more than half the buildings, about 600, just over 600,000 feet, and we have another 590,000 square feet to go. We're looking at various uses for that space, lab, data center, educational use, manufacturing, distribution potentially, and housing, which I'm here to talk about tonight. As part of the development of the property, we built and upgraded a new co-gen facility in 2017, 2018, which serves all the, mostly electricity and all the cooling and heating for the park. We're working on a solar project as well as a hydro project over the next couple of years to add additional energy production on site. 2016, I received a preliminary approval to list the property on the National Register, and that's the whole property, every building, and that was approved, and the primary reason was the industrial history of the property and the background of American Optical. This year, the town planning board designated the park as an AO overlay district, and that gives us the ability for multiple type uses, and specifically residential, once again I'm here to talk about tonight. This is an aerial of the property, the building that green are the ones that have been developed, and we, as you can see, we've got about five buildings left to go marked in red. Tonight, we're talking about 25K Street. Its sister building, 515K Street, the two of them were, one of the first two buildings built by American Optical in the late 1800s. 515, you may know, is under redevelopment now for 48 affordable units. Construction has just started on that building. 25K Street, as I said, built in the late 1800s. It was built specific to AO's needs at the time, much like all the buildings within the park. It's multi-story, it's two stories, has limited loading and access capability as it's surrounded by water on all four sides, and really the highest and best use for this building and the only use is residential. The current plan is 127 units. We call this Phase Two of Southbridge Mills, with 515K Street as Phase One. We're looking at 63 one bedrooms, 57 two bedrooms, and seven three-bedroom units. This is a site plan which shows the building. 35K Street is part of the development, that's going to be a leasing maintenance office for both 25K Street and 515, and then the major primary parking for the property is going to be the other side of the river. There's a total of 194 spaces that go with the building. As I said, the majority will be across the river, showing, colored in here, and then there'll be some ancillary spaces across the street at what we call the 515 or K Street This gives you a little look at the footprint of the building, what's really unique about this property, as I said, it's got water views on all four sides, highly unusual, and our plan, because of the width of the building, is to cut two open-air courtyards in the middle of the building, which will give all units obviously outside light, both on the perimeter and the interior units on the courtyards. Size of the units, as I said, 63 one-bedroom, units just under 700 square feet, the two-bedroom is 57 of those, just over 1,000, and the three-bedroom units at just under 1,200 square feet. Much like 515K Street, as required by historic guidelines, all the existing brick walls and floors will be retained. These units are finished off with very high-end finishes. The beauty of this building is high ceilings, some places actually as high as 16 feet, but average about 12-foot in height. Like all American Optical buildings, this one has huge window openings. All their buildings, they built with a lot of natural light in the design. As I said, exposed brick and beam, and basically retaining the mill feel and the age of the Much like 515K Street, we'll have some ancillary spaces, management leasing office, mailroom, fitness yoga area, community room, business center, probably a small movie theater and bike storage. These are all pretty standard amenities in these types of units in Massachusetts. As part of the perimeter of the building, we'll share a fenced children's playground with a 515K Street. We'll have community patios and benches that'll be available to the public to access, that'll be along the pond, landscape walkway around the building, and then community seating and area overlooking the pond, as I said. And then, we're doing, as a master plan within the park, a set of sidewalks and walking trails within the park, allowing the public to come on in and walk inside the property. The low-income housing tax credit program, which is really the basis of what we call the Affordable Unit Program, this was passed by Congress in 1986, and really the concept is quote "quality units" for at or below market rates. The program is administered here in the state through DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, and the theory behind how the rents are set is they're based on the median income in that area, and then a percentage of that to set the rents. Southbridge is part of Worcester County, where the average median income in 2020 was just over $78,000. The program for redeveloping this building from a financing standpoint is very similar to what was used for Mary Wells School. This will have no age restriction, and it's very similar to the financing structure we put together in our closing with 515K Street. This gives you an idea of the three types of units and the rent. So we have, you break the allocation based on percentages, as I said, of the median income, so we have 30, 60, and 80% categories. There'll be no marked, what we call, market rate units. In Southbridge, as you may know, the market rates are actually very similar to DHCD established rates. That's a little unusual. Usually, the affordable housing rates are well below the market rate in that community, but here in Southbridge, they're very similar. On the 30% units, so this would be a family making about $25,000 a year, the rents are set at 1,247 for the one-bedroom, the number to the right is what the actual tenant will pay, 556, so the tenant will get a federal subsidy each month, a voucher basically to make up the difference. Same on the two-bedroom, that'll be at 1,585, the tenant will pay 667 out-of-pocket, and on the three-bedroom, 1,984 is the rent, and the out-of-pocket will be 771. There is no subsidy on the 60 and 80% units. These are the amounts that the tenant will actually pay out-of-pocket on a monthly basis. The mix, we've got 16, 30% units, 60%, 103 units, and then we have 80% units. So the majority are in the 60% of income category. And really, the core concept here is it allows a developer to build high-quality housing for rents that are affordable for the working market, the working folks. The LIHTC process is rather lengthy. We will be submitting our pre-op with DHCD in October. If approved, we go to what's called a one-stop, which is due at the end of January, and you'll find out if you get approved the summer of next year. Frankly, most, it's such a competitive program that most first-time applications get kicked out just on, because it is so oversubscribed, so our expectation is we would get most likely kicked out this first round and then reapply next October. If everything goes as planned, we'd have a construction start towards the end of 2023 and a delivery end of '24. So the things that we need to put together as far as the DHC approval, town special permit, as I mentioned earlier, the property now sits in the AO overlay district, which allows for residential development subject to a special permit from the planning board. We've had two hearings with the planning board and a third hearing coming up, October 6th, I believe. Once you get pre-approved, you need to develop your drawings to 70%, complete market studies and appraisals, environmental review, local funding commitment, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight, preliminary financing commitment, and then the state historic credits. That's usually the lengthiest aspect of this. For those who don't know, the state credits get doled out every quarter roughly, and they're basically allocated by Secretary Galvin, and there's always oversubscription for the number of credits the state allows. I think this year it's somewhere around 70 million, and there's probably applications are 200 to 300 million. So, most projects that are requiring state historic tax credits to develop, you really have to wait for a year to 18 months to accumulate a certain number of those credits, so that you know by the time you complete construction, you've received all your full allotment of state credits. And then a very small portion of these projects are financed traditionally, roughly about 15 to 20% traditional construction financing. 80% is really made up of federal state subsidies and tax credits. Local funding commitment has always been a requirement of DHCD. As this program's gotten far more competitive over the last three to four years, that commitment has been, basically, you have to have that as part of your submission or you'll get rejected. Most communities contribute in cash. In some instances, the DHCD allows an in-kind, and that's actually what was done with Wells School, where there was an adjustment to the purchase price to show there was value in the purchase from the developer. 515K Street, the town was gracious enough to approve a waiver of the building permit fees, and that turned out to be about $3,400 per unit. What I'm proposing, similar in-kind contribution for Phase Two, 25K Street, the estimated fees based on 42 million in construction costs, about 365,200 based on the rate structure that we looked at, that math comes out to just under, just over $2,800 per unit. We expect or project that the tax assessment on the completed project will be upwards around 7 million, the current assessment is about 1.3 million, so the difference to the town annually will be about $100,000 a year, over and above what that building has generated today in tax revenue, and based on the $365,000 investment discussed earlier, that's just over a three-year payback of the investment. This chart gives you an example of some other projects in Massachusetts, obviously different-sized communities, many larger than Southbridge, but this gives you an idea of the number of units and a cost per unit of the contributions, and you can see the source in most cases is city or state funds provided. And so, this math basically shows that at the high end for a project in Newton, 55 units, the contribution was just under 72,000 per unit, and that ranges all the way down to a low in Taunton, 56-unit project there where the contribution was $3,571 per unit. As I said earlier, 515K Street turned out to be just over 3,400 per unit, and what I'm proposing for 25K Street is an in-kind contribution that's more, that's closer to 28, just 29, under $2,900 per unit. So obviously, at the lowest end of the spectrum. Tenant profile, the whole idea here is these units are priced to allow the majority of working couples to rent. It's considered a work-first program, quite frankly. We have limited three-bedrooms, effectively family units, so only seven. In this case, some of the new tenants, many of the new tenants may be Southbridge residents right now, so I would not expect, you know, based on this data, that there'd be any major impact to town resources, and DHCD and their studies shows in most cases, state economic analysis shows that net economic gain to the community from these projects because of the limited impact to the town services. So in summary, much like 515K Street, this is new product to the marketplace, providing high-quality units for residents at below or market rates. Should have minimal impact based on the number of one- and two-bedroom units to town services. It continues the, really, the fresh new neighborhood feel that we're developing with inside the park. This is obviously, from an investment standpoint, a great return. In my business view, you got your money back in three years, that's considered a very good return on your money, and it puts a building back in service that's been vacant since the mid-'90s, when AOTech, an AO company, moved out, and we've had it marketed for variety of uses ever since then, and here we are today with really the only viable use for redevelopment is residential. Thank you.
Any questions? Or comments? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. In your presentation that you handed us here, it says this is low-income housing, but you are saying that this is affordable housing, not low-income, so which is it?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's just the name that we use in DHCD, that's the name of the program. Are you referring to LIHTC, the initials LIHTC?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, well, that's just what they call it, it's an institutional organization program, so.
So it's not low-income, it's just affordable housing?
It's affordable. It's not federally subsidized, it's not run by the government, it's not owned by the government, this is privately owned, privately marketed. We interview, screen all our tenants, this is no different than how 515K Street's going to be developed. And the voucher program is for, once again, for the one-bedroom units, and those vouchers go with the building, they don't go with the tenant, so the tenant that applies, if they meet that criteria and they qualify, then they get the voucher specific to this property.
Also, in your presentation here, you mentioned that the Wells School was discounted purchase price, and I don't know, I don't know where you got that information from, but the Wells School was discounted because nobody wanted to buy it. I mean, I looked at the, I looked at the documents from 2013, when that building was assessed at $3 million, and the town manager at the time, Chris Clark, read And the town manager at the time, Chris Clark, reduced the purchase price of that building to $1 million because no one was interested. And it took another year and a half before somebody finally bid on the project, on the building, and they offered, he reduced it from $3 million to $1 million, and they offered $1.2 million. So we didn't really reduce the purchase price of that building to accommodate the builder. We reduced the purchase price of the building because nobody was interested in it. And so a year and a half later, someone came along and said, "Well, I'll give you $1.2 million for the building." So I think it's a little misleading to say that the Wells Building was discounted so someone, in order to benefit someone who wanted to build low-income housing or affordable housing. And that's all I have for now, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick things. First off, what's your timeframe for starting the project if you get approval?
Tonight from the town?
Yeah.
As I said, the process starts with a pre-app, which gets filed in October, and then you wait for DHC to rule on that. If it's approved, you'll know December.
December, okay.
And then we have to file what's called a one-stop. And if that's approved in June of next year, you'll have your, all your state approvals to proceed. Then you'll have to go out and get construction financing and raise equity and the rest of it. That takes about six, six months. So that's why I said, you know, we're assuming we're not going to get approved this round, and the cycle will start over again in '22. So we're talking, thinking of '23 construction. We may be surprised. I mean, we've been told that the state is really pushing for more affordable housing. That's a big initiative for the governor, and they may allocate more money next year for affordable projects.
Okay. And the other thing is, I think I actually raised this issue with the 5 to 15K Street too, is that I understand that you are kind of required to use the annual median income for Worcester County, which, as you stated, is $78,345. However, here in, here in Southbridge, it's $51,270. So that means the rents would be, the rents that you would be asking would be skewed against Southbridge residents.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question, I apologize.
It's not really a question, I guess it's not really a question, it's really more just a comment, just an observe, an observation based on the numbers. Do you see yourself doing anything? Because, looking through those rent, those rent numbers, they do seem exceptionally high for Southbridge. I understand that they match, that they match more or less what the state wants, what their, what their calculations are. I don't really have a question, I'm just more of an observation, anything else, I guess.
Those rents are set by DHCD.
Yeah, I get that.
I can't tell you how they go about doing it, what their appraisal process is.
Yeah.
And that's, those are this year's rents. You know, that could change by the time we move the project forward, they could be, most likely would be higher.
It probably would be, unfortunately.
The rents in Southbridge have, before the pandemic, were really increasing in quantum leaps, 5%, 10%, 15%, 17% and 18%, going into 19%, leveled off a little bit with the pandemic. So that's why the delta, you know, is relatively close right now between what DHCD has set and what the current market rents are.
I'll admit, I think this is more of a comment, I guess more for my fellow counselors, is that I understand why he's looking for this vote tonight later. I don't know if you consider this premature, to talk about this now, we're at the agenda item, as many of you.
I think we can, we can address that at the agenda item.
Okay, I'll bring it up then.
Counsel Jovan?
I didn't, oh, I thought you said Counsel Ryan.
No, Counsel Jovan.
The mask, because you can't hear anything, so. Well, first off, through the chair to Mr. Norton, thank you for the distinction about the differences between affordable and the subsidized housing, because that was a question that came out after the 515, about, it's not Section 8 housing, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the majority of these, 60% would be paying well into the $1,000 rents and not subsidized, if I understood that correctly.
Yeah, 60% would be family income of just over $60,000.
Okay, with no subsidies?
Right.
Federal, okay. So that's an important thing for me to understand, based on going forward, when people in the public ask for that. And just to Counsel Marketti's point, not to, I do know, I'm not going to hold this against Mr. Norton, that I believe if we were to research the letter that the former town manager, St. Angelo, put out, he did use the verbiage that "we sold the building at a reduced rate in support of the LIHTC," or the housing tax credits. So that is, I believe, in a document from the former town manager, and that's where that information came in support of the application for that project, that the Wells Building. When we sent that, that was language that the former town manager had put in. So he's, that's where that information came from, just so that the public knows, and Counsel Marketti, because I was familiar with that project at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, all.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine, Citizens Form. Is there any citizen that would like to address the council on an issue not on the agenda this evening?
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. I wanted to let everybody know about an upcoming siting board meeting with the Northeast Energy Center LLC. They're doing a liquefied natural gas project, and they're proposing it at 304 Southbridge Road, Charlton, which is right over the border on 169. And the siting board is going to conduct a remote siting board meeting using Zoom on Wednesday, October 6th, at 1:00 p.m. And I wrote this all down. I don't know if you can zoom in. Okay. And I'm going to say it too, in case people are listening. Oh, okay. It's https://us06web.zoom, which is z-o-o-m dot u s slash j slash 81440479088. So that's going to be the siting hearing to participate in. And if you'd like to see their tentative decision, it's available at https://mass.gov/info-details/ and all these words have a hyphen in between them. Salem Beverly Transmission Project and Northeast Energy Center LNG. Okay? So I just want everybody to know that that's happening. And I sent all this information to all the counselors, I think I forgot your mic, I'm sorry, I'll get it to you tonight. So if you want the information, please contact them, and they can email it to you, so you can click on it. And there's phone numbers, you can submit comments in English or Spanish, there's English and Spanish documents. So. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, the town manager.
Going through the mail today, we received at the end of last week a notice for the same meeting, so I have that in a form that I could scan and post on the town's website for anybody, and we'll put it on news right up front. So if anybody's interested, if they can't copy it from the videotape, we'll make sure that it's up there for the public.
Very good, thank you. Any other citizens that wish to address the council on an agenda item, on an item not on the agenda for this evening? Very good. If it's not on the agenda, you may address the council. Okay. Very good. Moving ahead to Agenda Item Number 11. Vote to waive electrical, plumbing, gas, as well as building permit fees estimated at $400,000 that would otherwise be attributed to the 25K Street project to exhibit the town's support of this affordable housing project.
So moved.
Second discussion, Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was, I was going to say, at the end of the last, at the end of Chip's discussion. As I mentioned when I, when he was talking about it, the rates that they're charging really are not affordable for Southbridge. I've always had a problem with the way the state calculates these things at Worcester County rates, when our part of the county is, unfortunately, income-wise significantly lower than most of the rest of the county. So I don't, I don't see that it's necessarily fair to Southbridge residents who may be seeking houses. I know that what, I know that Mr. Norton noted that the rates, the rental rates in Southbridge have been going up lately. And I think that's a lot of that has to do with more speculate, with speculative buyers than the actual ability of Southbridge residents to pay the rent. So I have to wonder where, where those are going and how many of those houses are simply being used for Airbnbs without, without residents at all, which would be a problem, because I know other places are seeing that. And I was thinking, at this point, how much of the 5 to 15K Street is done? And it seems to me that doing this now would seem to be a little premature until we see how much of that project gets filled and gets completed and what it looks like when it's done. I know that it's started, obviously it's well fenced off and all of that stuff, I know the work is going on down there. But, you know, until we see that, I'm a little reluctant to throw our support into a project until we know what happened with the previous time we did that, if that makes sense. That's all I had to say at the moment.
Counsel Jovan?
I defer to Counsel Marketti, I'll speak after him.
I'm sorry, Counsel Marketti.
Well, thank you, Counsel Jovan. Mr. Chairman, through you, $400,000 is a lot of money for the town to give away, and that's money that we could use on road improvements. I know the Main Street road project is coming to a completion, and more work is being planned for the rest of Main Street and other roads in town, and that's, money could be well used on the roads. Last year, when the council voted to waive $166,000 in building fees for 15K Street, a resident approached that lectern and asked if the town had ever exhibited this type of support for any other project in town. And the council chairman at the time, Counsel Jovan, said the town discounted the purchase price of the Mary E. Wells Building for the developer to convert it into housing, and the town was also doing major rehabilitation of Main Street in front of Marcy Street. These were considered to be the town's contribution to the project. And as I pointed out earlier, the Wells Junior High was reduced by Chris Clark because he said at the time, in 2013, no one was interested in the building. And after he reduced it from $3 million to $1 million, it took another year and a half, and finally, Arch Street Development bid on the building, they were the lone bidder at $1.2 million. We reduced the price because there was no interest in the property. We were not reducing it for Arch Street Development to come in and turn it into affordable housing. Now, there are also plans to do major rehabilitation on East Main Street. The town is planning to work on the water line, reconstruct the road, pave it, widen the sidewalks on East Main Street. That area is directly in front of K Street project, and it seems to me that this would qualify as an in-kind contribution from the town for this project as required by the state. Speaking of contributions to the project, the town devoted two years of mass work grants to the Southbridge Innovation Center, grants that could have been used in other parts of this community. Unfortunately, we lost out on that grants last year due to some sloppy work on the grant application. And then this year, Mr. Norton decided to withdraw his mass work application, and it was too late for the town to reapply for the Max Works Grant. So we lost, we lost out on two years of grants for the Southbridge Innovation Center. So I would say we have gone above and beyond to support the K Street project. I'm not opposed to Mr. Norton's fixing up that, those buildings. I think it's a beautiful plan that he's got. I just don't feel the town can afford to waive fees when we have a lot of other urgent needs in town. I mean, we have roads, we have the fire station, we have to deal with curbside collection, we have the stormwater management coming up. It's all going to take a lot of money, I don't think we can afford it. In addition, the planning board has yet to even vote on this project. So for all of these reasons, I'd urge the counselors to vote no tonight on waiving the fees on 25K Street. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan?
I'll defer, because I've talked about the other projects before, but I'll defer so I can hear new counselors talk about some of those.
Counsel Ryan, then Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I support the project here tonight. You know, we're taking a property that is not being used, and we're turning it into something that can be used to provide housing. Let me tell you, as a young person trying to find housing in this community, how freaking hard it can be.
Counselor.
That's why I said freaking, for the record. How hard it is to find housing in this community for young people, one that's affordable. For one, part of the reason rates are going up is because the lack of available property in the community drives up rates. When you have less resources, more people are fighting for those resources, which make them more valuable. We have less housing right now, it's really hard to find anything because everyone's trying to find housing right now, both in buying homes and in rentals. Right now, I can tell you, before all this housing crisis started, I could go on any search site and find 10 to 20 rental properties available. I'm lucky if I find three or four. It is crunch time, we are running out of housing, and part of the reason young people are leaving is because there's no affordable housing for single individuals in this community. This provides more affordable housing for those individuals. Like, for me, this seems like a common sense, this waive the fees, like every other, he's not wrong, that every other community that has done in support of this, you have to show support. And we're, what he's asking for is less per unit than what other communities were giving. So I don't think this is an unreasonable request, to the point that was made that we could be doing roads, we have money and stabilization we can put to roads too. That's not a reason for to kill this project, I'm sorry, that's not. The fact of the matter is, this is an opportunity to provide more housing and more opportunity for people to live here who also work here and do, spend their money here. I don't understand why we wouldn't support that opportunity when all it is, is a mere $400,000 in fees that we're not going to collect, you know, to take this building and make it usable again, you know? Or we could just let it sit and do nothing, that's the other option. And I'd rather be used to provide housing in a time where housing is becoming harder to come by. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel Adal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I want to thank Mr. Chip Norton for not losing the hope of the town of Southbridge, that building was empty since 1990. And I wish he can look for more to open some spaces for small businesses with that project down there, would give more spaces for, more opportunity for businesses, not only apartment. The only thing, my concern on waiving the fee, I mean, I'm willing to agree on some fee because it's going to cost the town. I think we hire a private engineer to review the plan out and stuff like that, the town is going to pay some fees. I'm not sure in the future if we have to support that project with enough water. I'm not sure in the future if we have to support that project with enough water to be able to operate the sprinkler systems. I don't know if that require or the water in the building. So that is going to cost the town some money. So, I mean, I'm with some waiver of the fee, but not all of it. I don't know if that, somewhere we can discuss it down the road because, you know, why some of the residents is going to pay for something what's not supposed to be paying for. So I, I agree with some fee, but not all of it because the town is going to cost, obviously, this project is going to cost the town some money. And so we're waiving somebody's fee, and then we added some money on the citizen already is here. I don't think that's fair. So maybe we can meet halfway somewhere. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just, just a couple of things. Again, Counsel McHedy alludes to the fact of a comment that I made at a meeting. That information was given to me directly from the town manager that we had in place, the professional that we hired, the one that was handling the sale of that building. That was his information, is not a comment that I made. It was documented however the town wanted to document it at that time. It was a previous council before I even got here, or other councilors got here, that alluded to the sale of that building. I did make the comment. I stand by the comment, but it was given to me by the information provided to me by the professional town manager that we had at the time. Yes, I did state that we were doing infrastructure work on Marcy Street, that that could be included into in-kind contributions. When Mr. Norton came to us on the other project, we did waive the fees, and I think at that time, I asked the Board of Assessors, when we started to talk, Counsel Adams and I to Plan and Development and the Council Chairman, when this project was brought to us before we could bring it to council, we had a conversation and a meeting with Mr. Norton to discuss what was the cost benefit to the town of Southbridge. If we were to waive these fees, what did it mean? I do have, I, I share the concern about waiving $400,000 worth of fees. But I also do understand the fact that these applications say that they would like some kind of commitment from the town to show good faith that we support the project and we're, we're there. So I, I think at that time, I was looking at a fee structure where you're not really giving a, it is a product. And I looked at it personally as these buildings have sat there since 1990 vacant, you know, Mayfall, you know, whatever, and they couldn't be used for anything else. And this was a sensible solution with little money from the town of Southbridge, real money. It did take time from the professionals to review those plans, and I think the town, our now, our town manager now worked out a good agreement to streamline the process and we have voted to that professional engineer that Counsel Dow had alluded to, and that may be down the road. Again, we look at, this building is just sitting there with no real use to for manufacturing. What is the logical step to do with it? Let Mr. Norton have it sit there and fall into the river? Or work with Mr. Norton and provide some kind of in-kind contribution to him to put this grant through? I understand Counsel Steve's point where, well, maybe we'll wait, but to wait, you want to get these grant applications in the pipeline to see where they go. So I wouldn't want to wait. We do know, we do see this progress on this, on this building, and I would like to support this so that we could get into that pipeline. And I do agree with Counsel Ryan's point. I think I see every day in social media, people in search of apartments, family members that are looking for apartments. I have a family member that's looking for an apartment, can't find anything. So I don't know why there's such a shortage of apartments, but I think this is a, a great project. And I do believe, and I would want the town manager to, if there were infrastructure improvements that would need to be done, such as water, that water main would be on his property, so he would have to pay for all that infrastructure from the town line, if I'm not mistaken, onto the property. So there's no cost to town. He's just, he's going to pay just like a business owner for that improvement to, to, to that property. So I, I'll, I'll support this at this time because I'd like to see something done to it. And I think, I would like to hear, I know the assessor is here, I just want him to verify what that cost benefit is. If, if, if those improvements come through, what, what the current assessment is and what that improvement value will bring to the town of Southbridge based on the building value, and that is all the ancillary other things that will go with that, excise taxes, sales tax, mail tax, use of, of property. So if, if either the town manager or the Board of Assessor or the assessor could articulate some of those numbers, I'd like to hear that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I didn't hear the complete question, but I was asked to prepare information on what the additional property value and additional taxes would be on this property, and I did in the form of a memo to the council. And on the last page of the memo, I'll just kind of read down, and it kind of summarizes it pretty well. So as mentioned earlier, the existing building and land in its current state are valued at $1,836,000. Therefore, the value attributable to the housing redevelopment to the, to the property will increase by $5,154,000. Using this year's tax rate of $19.44 per thousand valuation, that will yield an estimate of additional tax dollars in the amount of approximately $100,194 annually if the project is completed. So this is based on the rental information that I was given and so forth, and it's an estimate. But I estimate about $100,000 more annually if the property is, if the project is done.
Very good. Counsel Lazlo.
It's an interesting conversation tonight. We're going to increase a building for, for the private sector that works for profit, $400,000, but we're going to get $100,000 a year. There's a lot of discussion about the Wells Building, which, I don't care what was written on a piece of paper or who said to what, the bottom line was, I remember the economy. When the economy was in the tank, the Wells Building wasn't worth 10 cents, and we wanted 3 million, truth, fact. What happens when you can't move real estate in, in an economy that's in the tank, you drop the price. Basically, it drops by itself. Nobody, it forces you to go down to sell. And right now, we're in a seller's market, okay? So now, any housing market that we do have, as one councilor did, there's a shortage. There's a shortage on housing, period, single-family apartments, everything. It's a, it's solid. There's a shortage. That's why real estate in Southbridge, which you couldn't give away a few years ago, right now won't stay on the real estate chart for maybe 30 to 60 days it's old. Now, I'm not supporting this tonight, but I do support Chip Norton. I think Chip Norton is a businessman that does what he has to do for the benefit of the project. He, he answers to Board of Directors and investors. He's done a great job. We're very supportive with the AOD and everything that happened down that end of town. When you turn around and say you want to show support to the state, waiving the building fees is not one of them. That's corporate welfare. What happens when you build buildings falling in the river? Oh, that's funny, my building was falling in the river. I had to build it out of my pocket. I didn't have the government come in and give me, waive my building fees. Matter of fact, I had 10 times the pressure on my project, on my building, than any other building in town. But the bottom line was, I paid my freight, I built my building, and I own my building. When you waive building fees, you set a bad precedent. I said it the last time. You want to, you want to improve everything around the AO, I'm game. The water park and different ideas that they came up with, I was very supportive of a lot of that stuff. Sidewalks, the roads in front, anything to make his project look good around it, we should. We can't even pave the road, which is now going to get paved, in front of Russell Hammington, one of the biggest employees in town. Where are our priorities here, guys? When counsel talks about expenses, I know what expenses are. I know what the tax rate is. It's very expensive to live anywhere. And if you're in business, it's even more expensive. That's why I do respect Chip Norton, and I do know that he's a businessman that, that moves and shakes the town of Southbridge with his investments. But the day you have to take the money out of an ambulance, which we need to replace an ambulance, we need to build a fire station. Waiving building fees was the first mistake we made. If you want to give him a tiff on the property, that's the way you do it. You do not do it with waiving building fees. I, I said it the last time, and I'll continue to say it. There are a lot of projects in Southbridge. If you really want to, you want to waive all the fees for all the projects? They're all making beautiful property. Look what they're doing on Main Street, on the corner. They're, they're overhauling a total facility on your Main Street. We didn't waive his building fees. They're going to build a beautiful building right in the hole where the fire was, I heard. If we waive these, we should waive his building fees. There are tons of ways of looking at this, depending on who you're selling. If you're selling Chip Norton's project, you sell it for him. I'm selling to Southbridge taxpayers. It's called fair share. I paid my fair share. I think the building fees is the wrong way to go about it. There are other ways that we can help Chip Norton, and I'm all game on a lot of different things. But when you talk about economic development, it's usually grants and funding in state and federal, not the Southbridge taxpayer, under any circumstances. The last time we waived the fees, this town came unglued about waiving building fees, including the inspections Department. So gang, your vote tonight is your conscience. You do what's fair, what you think is fair. But I'm in the field, and I see a lot of investors investing in Southbridge right now because, again, the economy is hot. You're going to see it fall back off. And then what? The taxpayers will have to swallow the chestnut again. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Through you to the town manager. Mr. Town Manager, do we have the ability to research about the use of ARPA funds in support of this project?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counsel Jovan. Of the four buckets that we have to use ARPA funds, one of them is economic development. As I've indicated before, there's 135-page document called the interim, interim rule that explains exactly how each of those four buckets works. And then they, the Treasury has subsequently published an FAQ which further explains each of those four categories, and that's somewhere that I'd say getting close to 50 to 60 pages. I would have to take the time to go off and look to see if that is an, an area where we can do it. As I've indicated before, the difference between the CARES Act and the ARPA funds is with the CARES, you had to seek pre-approval before using the money. Here, you use the money and then justify it after the fact. So as has been the case when we've talked about paving, I, I've gone through meticulously and in some cases, reached out to some of my colleagues at the Massachusetts Accounting and Finance, just to bounce ideas as well as other managers to make sure we're in the right, on the right track with using these funds. So I couldn't give you an answer this evening without doing that type of due diligence to see if, if it falls into an acceptable use, and I'm not prepared to answer that at the moment.
Thank, thank you. If I may continue, because I, I see that as a quick, the, the waiving of the building fees was a, a quick answer, and I certainly appreciate Counsel Lazlo's thoughts on this, and we've had discussion about it. I, I think, to a couple of councilors' point, that, you know, there are other infrastructure improvements that have, may have to be done that are part of this project. And, you know, could we, because it is economic development, and if we are replacing a water line, I think a water line would possibly fit on that. I, I want to defer to Counsel Katrona before I make a motion, but I, I, I think if we could make a motion to refer this to Plan and Development Subcommittee, just to have a further conversation in Subcommittee as to what are some of the possible grant and implement, grants, that if ARPA is available to use that in support of this project, could we go down that, that and bring some, some possible alternatives to the council? But I know Counsel Katrona had his hand up, and I don't want to make that motion without having my good friend Counsel Katrona speak.
Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Counsel Jovan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To echo a lot of what Counsel Lazlo stated earlier, I too also support Chip Norton and this project. I believe the project will get done regardless if we support this, this evening or not. I was one of the councilors, I did not support the $166,000 last time. If there was another way, as I stated, we should have done it. The taxpayers are up in arms in this community now. We gave them a level-funded budget. There were no cuts. I don't believe it's fair to the taxpayers in this town to waive the fees of $400,000. It's going to be a terrible precedent to set, as I stated the last time, and I don't believe we should do this going forward. Thank you.
Counsel Lazlo.
Just a quick example, I, I think Counsel Jovan is, is bringing out valid points. When we did the infrastructure project on Main Street, one of the things we did was, we kept talking about some of these old buildings in order for some developer to come into this town. There's no way that they will come in and renovate one of these large buildings, such as the Hotel Newman, say, without fire suppression, where you have the actual fire system put into the building. And on the town's behalf, and to the credit of the economic development, we were saying, well, why don't we run the water line to the property line on the sidewalk, which is an expense usually taken up by, Mr. Dow knows how that works on Everett Street. You know, he paid to bring in the line. Now, we done, we did it through the, the monies and stuff that we did through the project on Main Street. This is a prime example when you have grant money and different stuff coming into the town from grants, and you can steer it in an area where you're going to run a larger water line, no expense to the developer, but we are going to get paid water. There's a good side to it, but I think doing it through grants and stuff like that, understand my point. The fee system is not where you do it. There's many other ways we can do this. I just don't, I think this is a very bad precedent. I think every builder that was around the last time we did it wanted, they made a big joke out of it, where's my fee waived? When you waive my fees? So I think we've got to be cautious, councilors, on this one here. Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I, off of Counsel Jovan's point, I know we have to have that letter, I think Mr. Norton has to have that letter in by the 15th, 14th of October. So we'd have to get, if, if you were to make a motion, we'd have to put that through pretty quickly. I will, will say that I thank Mr. Norton for coming in here today, giving us a great brief letter as he did last time. I want to thank Will as well for coming up with the numbers. One thing that was brought up was, was the fact that Will came up with these numbers. And that'll be, this permit waiver will be paid back within three years, three and a half years of actually, after the, the building is done. Or nothing happens, and you don't get that extra $100,000 per year. Just like 5 through 15K Street, the property value went up over $50,000 for taxes once 5 through 15K Street, and that'll be paid back. That $165,000 will be paid back in, in three years as well, as once it's up and running. So overall, it's a plus for the town. I understand that builders are asking about the waivers, but none of the builders came in here that I'm aware of asking for help. And I, I welcome them as far as, see what we can do to help them out in economic planning. So, and I think we said that last time, would, you know, mom and pop store, help... So, and I think we said that last time, would, you know, mom and pop store help? Be able to come in, absolutely. Work with us, see how we can do these things. We've given TIFs. I will agree with Counsel Lazo. There are other variants that we could look at. I'm sure some of the builders, you know, obviously complained about certain things. But I do believe that if we, if a TIF was offered, which takes some time, which will be past that period of, middle of October, we, the taxpayers will probably be paying more, per se, based on the agreement with the TIF. I do support this. It took me a little while to figure this out, and I did, I do support this. Again, three and a half years, this is paid back. The overall length of that building sitting there for 30 years doing nothing. And by the way, 2019, the economy was not hot, and our real estate was not blowing up like it is now. And that's gonna be cooling off pretty soon too as well. So, I will say, you know, during 2019, we took into consideration to beautify some of these old mill buildings and help support our local businesses in doing so. So, I do support this. I do support the progress that's happening in town. I do agree with Counsel Ryan that it is hard to find affordable housing anywhere in this United States at this point in time. And this will help out with our town, our requirements, to provide that 10% affordable housing within our community. Where some are struggling with that because they didn't want that in the first place, where this town is saying, okay, let's see what we can do to help out. I think we're at about 6% or 7% right now. So we're still below the affordable requirements, affordable housing requirements. Again, property value goes up, building is, a 30-year-old vacant building gets fixed. If it doesn't, you know, he doesn't have to do anything to this building. It could just sit there, crumble right into the river. And we don't see any progress happening over there. So I do support Mr. Norton and his attempt. I did, I will say this, I did ask individuals, I asked business owners, I asked department heads what they thought about it. I got both sides. And, you know, so ultimately I had to make that decision of the way I would support it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Again, it's a great move for the town of Southbridge. Like how I say, only my concern is some of the fees the town is gonna pay to getting going. So I'd like to make a motion to waive $200,000 of the 400, the fee. So I don't know if anybody wants to second it. I want to make a motion to waive only 200,000, not the full.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There being no second, it dies. Does anyone else wish to be recognized during discussion? Counsel Jovan, do you wish to be discussed?
Just very briefly, I just want to point out that I think the project is a good one in the long run. And I think it will generally both help the town and help revitalize that AO complex that has been slowly deteriorating for a very, very long time. I'm just concerned, as I said, just to reiterate, if I didn't say it clearly, that I think it's a little premature, because I would really like to see what happens with the 515 K Street first. And make sure that what we were doing and what he's doing and what the state's doing on that property really does work before we try to do it again. On the flip side, I also understand what he's saying about trying to get this project up and running and the timeframe he said about, about the probable delays in application, application to the state and all that kind of stuff, because the state does nothing quickly. I understand that totally too. I'm kind of stuck in the middle on this one.
Very good. Counsel Jovan.
Through you to, so the October 15th is a drop-dead date, is that, is that what it was? And I do know we had this scheduled for last week, but we had to postpone the meeting and have him come tonight. So, I just hate the fact that we were pressed for time to be able to try to look at alternatives. So that the 15th is a drop-dead date, is that correct? Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, through you, yes.
And I guess through you to Mr. Norton, if you could, if this were to be postponed, what does that do to your project?
Mr. Norton, could you approach the podium?
So I guess, one was that we have, that it's an October 15th date. And if we were to postpone any decision made or vote this down, what does that do to this project and what your next steps maybe?
Well, without the in-kind contribution, we won't be able to complete the application. So it would just be kicked out, it'd be voided. So it's one of the requirements of our pre-app submission.
And then you would have-
We define, we define the community's contribution.
Okay. And then you would have to try to apply next year and bring it back and throw it another year?
Yeah, we'd be delayed, it's a one-year cycle. So, we wouldn't be able to reapply till October of '22.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
All set. Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Quickly, we all know Mr. Norton's done a lot of work at the AO. He's done a great job down there. He continues to do a lot of work. And the town has certainly supported him in the past. But this is his to build, it's his to profit on. And if the town can help in any other ways, I think that's our duties. But not to waive the fees is not helping this town grow. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
I, again, we need to support our business partner, Franklin Realty. I'm not against this. I'm kind of feeding off of one of the councils up front there. We need some sort of in-kind work put into this application. Why can't we use infrastructure, our infrastructure work and stuff that we're gonna do as our in-kind contribution instead of the fee system? I'm not in favor, I'm not against helping this project. Nobody is in bigger favor of pushing something like this through. I'm on board. But again, when it's the way we do things, not what we do. And I think that what we do is help our partners, and we have in so many ways. I know that they've done different things. I just want to get a little creative with the planning and development if we go to Subcommittee, if we have to reapply in October or what the deadline is. But I think we gotta take the time and do it right. So, because this is gonna be an impact for the future. And I know that we can't waive all the fees for all the projects. That's kind of a, kind of a far cry of what my thought was. But it was just an example I used. But I think we need to work on this. I think we can get there for Chip Norton. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know it's gonna be too difficult to get to a plan of development, then back to a council because of the scheduling. We do have a meeting, I believe, next Monday?
That's correct.
Is it possible, Mr. Town, through you to the Town Manager, to take a look at some of those alternatives and look at what the infrastructure-type improvements may be in that area? Something that we can put down and articulate and postpone this to next week for a final vote? So that some of those questions could be asked? Because this really is the first opportunity that we've had to debate it. And let's take a week, I don't think one week, it's October 4th. I don't think we're gonna have a lot on the agenda for next week, given the fact that we don't have that many Subcommittee meetings this week. Could we make, can I make a motion to postpone this to next week for further discussion and vote and have the Town Manager take a look at ARPA funds? What infrastructure projects that we have on the books down there through DPW? Any sidewalk repairs, water repairs? If there's water lines that have to go to Franklin Realty? Is that something that we, you know, major water line improvements to the property? What are the things that we know have to be done on the town side? Because given the fact that there's parking lot that's gonna have to be done across the street, I'm sure we're gonna have to do some roadwork there. Perhaps we look at it and come back with some other different way that we can show that this is our, and it could be more than $400,000.
I second that, I second that motion for postponement.
Very good. We have a motion to postpone until next Monday, this item. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Those opposed? One, two, three. The motion carries. The motion, the agenda item is postponed until next Monday.
Mr. Chair, it's just, I believe that we may be able to articulate even more in-kind contributions if we really think about what may have to be done outside of waiving fees. Thank you.
Very good.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Norton for being here.
I'd very much like to thank Mr. Norton for his presentation this evening. I'm very impressed with the amount of work that's been done to the complex over the years. He's really done a lot to spruce up Southbridge, to make us proud again of that area of town. And I look forward to continuing to working with him as time moves forward. Thank you very much. We'll see you next Monday. Next agenda item is number 14. Vote to approve the Southridge Airport Commission request to move forward with the application for the $32,000 funding from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, and authorize the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So, second?
Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The General Government Subcommittee recommended this unanimously.
Very good. Mr. Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the Southridge Airport is able to apply for a $32,000 grant through the Federal Aviation Administration. This grant can be used for related services, the operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitization, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport and debt service payments. And so we'd like to apply for this grant and use it for those purposes.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Very good.
Sorry I couldn't get you out of here early.
Very good. We move now to Agenda Item Number 10, the disposition of the Solinsky dog matter. Please be advised that this is not a hearing of any violation of the dog ordinances, as those hearings were held in January and June of this year. As such, councils may address the chair in the customary manner of a regular Town Council meeting. According to Town Council Rule 8, voted on on September 26, 2011, citizens of Southridge and employees of the town may also address an agenda item. Citizens may speak for three minutes and for one time only. The council, if it wishes, may grant an additional two minutes for further statement. On January 28, 2021, Vegas, a dog owned by Mr. Donald Solinsky of Henry Street, was found to be a nuisance dog during a hearing before the Southridge Town Council. The council ordered that, in order to keep Vegas, Mr. Solinsky had to keep certain conditions. Among those were to keep Vegas properly muzzled and to use a proper leash system so as to keep Vegas properly restrained while out on walks. On June 11, 2021, Mr. Solinsky and Vegas were found by ACO Spencer inside of the fencing of McGann Field, also known as Henry Street Field. As a result, ACO Spencer took possession of Vegas for alleged violation of the hearing conditions. On June 28, 2021, the Southridge Town Council voted by a 7-0 margin that Mr. Solinsky had indeed violated the hearing conditions of January 28. Also on June 28, the Southridge Town Council voted to follow the recommendation of ACO Spencer and maintain possession of Vegas. This was voted by a 6-1 margin. Since that time, ACO Spencer has had Vegas observed and evaluated for possible adoption many times. At this point, the council chair does not know of any success in that endeavor. We will now hear from ACO Spencer and her further recommendations for Vegas.
Good evening, councilors. I just wanted to start to say that I tried really hard on trying to find an appropriate solution for this dog, following our town bylaws. Our town bylaws state that we do not do private adoption and that all adoptable dogs are surrendered or signed over to a shelter or rescue organization. I've been in contact with multiple organizations throughout the state. I was also in contact with a program called Anamatch, which their program is to connect shelters and rescues with other rescues and shelters, animal control officers, and trying to find appropriate placements for these dogs. Due to the dog's background, the bite history, the town nuisance order, which follows this dog throughout the rest of its life, throughout the Commonwealth, and the size of the dog, Anamatch was unavailable to help. I also reached out to a few of the rescues that actually they'll take on nuisance or dangerous dogs that have town orders. And those animals will reside with those individuals at their rescue with no avail, ability offered. I had a private trainer come out who takes on project dogs. And she also had two other volunteers with her. And due to Vegas's presentation at the cage door, she wasn't even able to get him out to do a successful evaluation. And again, due to his bite history, town nuisance order, and the size, she could not take on the responsibility due to safety. We also had Donna Savoy, the owner of Pack-a-Paws, come out free of charge to evaluate Vegas. He was evaluated behind the exercise gate and was also walked by one of the caretakers at the kennel. She observed the dog that was grossly undersocialized, fearful, but seemed to avoid direct contact with people. I've reached out to the MSPCA, who has resources available to help assist with pit bulls and behavior. They declined on helping due to, again, the history and the presentation of the dog. I go down there about three times a week. I boil chicken for him, I offer it to him, he'll take it. But I still cannot open up the cage door to get him out of the run without my safety being compromised. Since Vegas has been at the kennel, he has now started showing signs of self-mutilation by licking his paws. They do this out of boredom and kennel stress, which is understandable with the state that he's in. I don't have any other options for this dog with the cards of I can't do a private adoption, so I cannot advertise him, nor would I think I would even be able to find somebody that would be able to take him on with his history, the town order, and also his size. So my recommendation is to bring him to a veterinarian and have final services performed for this dog. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. I want to take a moment to commend you for your efforts and the time involved in this case.
Thank you.
You've, I believe you've gone above and beyond to get the dog placed and to take care of the dog. So I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Is there an objection to following the recommendation of the ACO? Counsel Adams.
Make a motion to not support the ACO's decision.
I didn't hear that. What was the motion?
We have a motion to not support the ACO's recommendation and a second. The motion by Counsel Adams, the second by Counsel Ryan. I'm sorry, Counsel Dow. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I support Counsel Adams' motion here tonight. Look, it's my firm opinion, it's no surprise here, that the dog shouldn't have been taken away in the first place. It was a technicality. The dog was sick. There are studies that have shown that short-muzzled dogs, when wearing a cage, can have choking issues. The dog shouldn't, didn't show any aggression, which was the reason we had the hearing in the first place, because it bit somebody. But no, we took the dog away on a technicality. Now that dog has social anxiety because it's been kept in a kennel for three months. This shouldn't have happened. The dog, upon- The dog, upon release, the idea was that this dog wouldn't be a danger to anybody. But because Mr. Solinsky was in the wrong place at the wrong time, and his dog was sick, he lost his animal. And now, because the dog's not been properly socialized, even though its trainers, the people that work with it every day, say he has shown improvement, now the dog's going to be put down. This is injustice, not in my opinion. There is hope for this dog. I'm not giving up hope on him yet.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Dow. I'm sorry. Counselor Adams.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll refer to Counselor Dow.
Very good. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Thank you for your work. But the dog didn't do anything. He didn't attack another person. He didn't chase nobody. The owner failed to protect the dog. Like I said the first time, the dog was protecting the owner, the owner failed to protect that dog. But doesn't mean the dog, he have to pay the whole price. Now, I understand we took the dog from him. And I agree with you, he's not able to take care of that dog. It's too big for him. But I do not agree to put that dog down, because he didn't do anything wrong after the first incident happened to protect the owner. Regardless, we wasn't there. We don't know what exactly happened. The owner fall, the dog got scared, he sees somebody in front of him, he go after him. He thought maybe somebody attacking the owner. I understand you worry, and you want to protect the citizen of Southbridge. But me, as a citizen in Southbridge, and I have a kids, five of them, I'm not scared to bring my kids around that dog, to be honest with you. I see him walk him around. I don't see him pull him all the time and chasing everybody walk near him. He did mistake, he didn't follow the rule, but he kept the harness on him, not to chase anybody, to be able to hold him maybe. Again, I wasn't there to see if the dog choking or not. I don't want to be defending him all the way, because he did mistake. But I feel bad to see that dog going down, because it's not the dog's fault. He didn't hurt anybody. Hopefully not, you know what I mean? But it's not fair for the dog to pay the price for nothing, because the owner failed to protect that dog. I don't know if we can give that dog some time to find him good place to go, but I'm not going to support that decision. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank the ACO for all the hard work she's been doing, and I don't believe anybody here upset with the ACO is justified. She did exactly what we pay her to do, and to evaluate, and to come up with a solution, working with the animals, and it's a thankless job. So, you know, even though I may not support the outcome of what you had recommended, not what you would like, what you recommended, doesn't mean that I don't hold you in high regard for the decision you made, because it's tough what you're doing. So, I do want to thank you. I did take advantage of the ACO's request that any counselor go down to see Vegas, spend some time with them. So, I spent last Tuesday with him. I spent Thursday with him. I have a dog in a similar circumstance. Obviously, we know how to control the dog and put the dog in a certain area so he cannot be reached by other people unless they physically go upstairs to think that the dog whisper and pet the dog. We don't do that. But I spent, I expected on Tuesday that this dog would go after me in a cage, no doubt about it. Anybody that thinks spending 45 minutes with an animal like that and thinks anything different is, in my opinion, and I'm no expert, is wrong. I've seen it too many times. I've had too many dogs in that situation. Now, on Thursday, when I showed up, and this is before the ACO arrived, I did bring peanut butter sandwich for the dog. Dog doesn't like peanut butter sandwiches. Found that out very, very quickly. He spit it out, didn't want nothing to do with it. But the dog didn't try to kill me, didn't attack me. They put it in the runner. He barked at me as soon as he got there. I do have a video of that, or afterwards, a few minutes afterwards. Ms. Kelly, who is the Oxford Animal Control Officer, brought Vegas out. Vegas acted fine around her, and according to ACO, both ACOs act fine around the part-time employee for Oxford as well. They're used to it. Dog's used to them. So, I do, I didn't expect, if I, if, I would have gone in on Thursday, and that dog tried to take my hand off, then I would have said, you know, we got an issue here. But he didn't. He barked at me, because he's trying to figure out who I was, they remembered who I was. And I walked around the kennel with him. I would not go inside the cage at that point in time, because I still have to build trust with that dog, and the dog has to build trust with me. So, we must have spent a few hours there. The ACO showed up. We had great conversation, just to go over my thoughts and kind of my history with animals and stuff like that, but at the same time, what her thoughts were too. And I think we came to a conclusion of just mutual respect on that end. When Vegas didn't want that peanut butter sandwich, he did take it from me. I was able to put my fingers right through the cage, and he did kind of take it from me and then just plopped it on the ground. But when I put my hand back up there again, flat, he just sniffed me and then walked away. Now, he hung out with me. We had, the ACO from Oxford gave me a little chair. I sat down with the chair. Vegas sat down with me, hung out for a while, but didn't want to go in after a while, probably wanted to be more comfortable with the settings, but unfortunately, we didn't have that opportunity because of another circumstance that happened. But Vegas had no time. He barked a couple of times. My dogs bark all the time. But he barked a couple of times, and, but he didn't show any aggression, didn't show his teeth at me or anything the entire time I was there. At one point, I actually walked away from where he was at, because he was, I believe the ACO showed up, and he wanted to know what the ACO was doing. So, I walked around the corner, and 20 seconds, 30 seconds later, Vegas wanted to know where I was at. So, he was, he's curious. I agree with Counselor Ryan at a point. I don't believe this dog should be euthanized for the failure of the owner. I do not ever recommend this dog going back to Mr. Solinsky. But I do want to give it an opportunity to survive and live. I do know we have cage issues and stuff like that after a period of time, I guess like anybody or animal would. But at this point in time, I'm not in agreement with the ACO's recommendation, and I would like to see us be able to try to figure out something else for Vegas, for its future. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counselor Lozo.
Yeah. This is a tough issue. There are a lot of pet owners, we're a lot of animal lovers. I'm one myself. But every situation warrants decisions, and we want to throw the word "justice" around nowadays. It's all about social justice. There's justice. Well, what justice in my eyes is, is when there is a law written and a program put out or a bylaw, and sometimes people overstep and violate the bylaw or violate state law, and there's consequences. But the justice is, the enforcement of the law is justice. The law is written. She did not write this law. I didn't write this law. But the one thing about enforcement, sometimes it doesn't always fit to certain people's liking, and then they hit it and call for justice. Justice is the enforcement of the law. You want to change a law, change that law. But don't say that this is not justice. Because the law was written, I know that you have my total support, 100% on this issue. Somebody was talking earlier and said, maybe we can find him a home. I sat and listened to ACO tell us how they tried to get a new home for him, adoption, various other things. But once there's a bite, it changes the law, and all of a sudden now, she's forced to do her job. If we disagree with the law, change the law. But I can tell you this, I have the scars to prove what these dogs can do. I have seen this particular dog in Cumberland Farms with the muzzle on, and he was growling like he just wanted to get out of there. I kept my distance, I, you just don't play with other people's dogs. The other day, I'm coming up Central Street, and there's Mr. Solinsky with another pit bull, kind of a tiger coat of fur, walking up Central Street. I thought, my head spun around, I go, wow, did he get his dog back that I didn't know about it? Him having that dog was a direct violation of the order. So, what have we learned? The first chance he got, the second chance he got, or the third chance he got? The bottom line comes down to is, we all have a job to do, sometimes we don't have, we don't have to like our job, or we don't even have to agree on the final outcome. But the bottom line is, ACO has done a fantastic job, and I've been on council, and I've dealt with dog officers before, or animal control officers, never have I seen a more professional as the one we have, even in the surrounding towns. So, when it comes time to do her job, she's professional, she's polished, and she executes her job, and she enforces the law. So, for me, I can support that 110%. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Counselor Katrona, then Counselor Adams.
Quickly, Mr. Chairman, I wholeheartedly support the ACO and her decisions. Let her do her job. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one note that I forgot to mention was, I know a lot of experts came in and evaluated Vegas and all that kind of stuff, and they spent between a half hour to an hour with Vegas, and obviously, to me, that's not enough time. But they are the certified experts, subject matter experts in this field. I did spend, we spent probably about three, three and a half hours, somewhere around there, with the dog over two days. So, I was able to see those changes within the dog itself. So, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Counselor Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The issue that I think really is here is, what happens if the dog is returned and it bites a child or a young toddler, then what? That's really the main issue.
As of right now, the discussion is the dog remaining at the kennel or having a vet appointment. It's not a discussion of returning town property. Vegas is the town of Southbridge's property, which was determined at the petition hearing that you guys had, when you guys did not reward the dog back to Mr. Solinsky. At that time, he became town property.
Thank you. I mean, that's, I saw the pictures of the bite marks on Mr. Hagerty, and he did go to the hospital, he did make a report, I saw the police report, and that's the question that came to my mind. If this dog was to bite a child or a toddler, there'd be some serious damage done there. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Like you say, we avoided on not to bring the dog back, to keep him alive right now. And he's a dog. They call him a dog for a reason. And I, so every dog, he tried to protect or do his job, we're going to put him down? Let's cat, not got a dog. I don't think that dog did anything else in the first incidents. Like the human being, they deserve second chance. You know, you speed the first time, if it's nice police, they give you warning, not ticket you or arrest you, and the second time you speed, they're going to give you ticket. Same thing if you do mistake, you know, the court always give you a second chance. And that dog, he deserves second chance. I'm not saying to go back, but give him another chance, maybe the time will find him a new owner, be able to protect that dog the way he's going to protect the new owners, because the existing owner didn't do his job to protect the dog. And like how I said, that meeting at that time, protect your dog, you know, and he We punch in a life, he's a life. It's not a wood, or is this dog alive? I mean, why we have to put him down for owner not protecting him? And he did mistake once, because the owner fall, and he thought something is hurting the owner. That's his job. That's what call him dog. He's protecting the owner. I think this dog deserves second chance. I'm not saying give him back to him, but could find a good owner, have a nice yard, and give him rest, a few years left for him is good. You know, again, I feel bad to see dog. I have two German Shepherd myself, so if they got loose for any incident, or somebody tried to cross my property and protect my shelter, that mean my dog is going to put down too? I mean, I don't know. You know, it's a life. I don't know. It's not just easy to put life down. Thank you.
ACO Spencer, then Counselor Ryan.
Mr. Chair, through you, to all councilors, this decision of private adoption is not an option with our town bylaw. The option is for shelter or rescue to take on the liability for this dog. So, I hear you guys talking about adopting him out, finding an owner. Again, that owner would have to come through a rescue or a shelter. It cannot come directly to us.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to, Counselor Dow is absolutely right. This isn't, and I got picked on earlier, this isn't justice, because justice would have been punishing the individual who did the issue, fining Mr. Solinsky. I supported that. I made it clear, we should fine him. Whether we wanted to fine him, jail him, he messed up, not the dog. Now the dog's suffering for it. Also, Ms. Spencer brought up that we can't do it. That's a simple change. We can go through and change the bylaw. I can bring it up on my next general government subcommittee, and we can work on those options to make sure. Because, to be quite honest, that bylaw needs to be looked at, because I think there's parts of it that are totally out of line when it comes to state law and how much power the ACO has. Not in particular around Ms. Spencer, but in general, around the way the law is written. So, we have to have a long discussion around that bylaw anyway. I'm fine with letting that discussion happen and seeing if there's somebody suitable for Vegas, because there is out there. If somebody like Counselor Adams can sit down, who has a history and able to get this dog to open up in two days, when I'm being told this dog can't be taken care of, frankly, that's crap. This dog can be helped. This dog can be saved.
Counselor Joe V.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, I hope we're not relitigating the hearings. This discussion this evening is the fact that it was a violation of the order. We remove the dog from Mr. Solinsky. The dog is in the custody of Southbridge, town of Southbridge, with an order for the town of Southbridge to retain the dog. Excuse me, Counselor Ryan. I have the floor.
You have the floor.
I didn't interrupt you. Nobody interrupted you. Thank you. So, we shouldn't relitigate the hearings about bite marks, attacks, and all that. It's all documented stuff. We issued decisions. First decision, then a violation, then what the town of Southbridge is going to do. Bottom line is, the town of Southbridge now is in custody of that dog. We have not given, we have not given an order to give that dog back to Mr. Solinsky. So, the question is, what do we do by law, state law and town bylaw, for the disposition of the dog? I certainly feel that euthanasia, disposing of the dog is a hard decision. I don't want to make that decision either. But that's what we're, that's what we're charged against. So, the question before my fellow councilors, if you don't want to support the order of the ACO, what are the next steps that you're willing to do? The dog is in the kennel at an expense to the town of Southbridge. The dog is sewn signs that is going to need medical treatment. How is the town of Southbridge going to address those needs to make sure that the welfare of the dog... of the dog is taken care of in a humane manner? Those are the decisions that we have to make. So if we want to sit here and say we don't support the order of, or the recommendation of the animal control officer, what is the next steps that we're gonna tell the ACO to do? Have the dog sit there another 60 days until we decide whether there's a bylaw amendment and hearings, and it's three readings. Three readings is gonna take us two months. By the time you get through subcommittee, reading one, reading two, reading three, final adoption. What happens to the health of the dog during that period of time? So what is the decision? Do we support the unfortunate because of the person's inability to control their animal? That decision has been kicked up to us, it's a difficult decision. But what, whatever decision you make, if you're not gonna support them, then please, don't leave it here for the animal control officer to not know, or the town manager to not know, what we're gonna do next. Because a decision has to be made with the animal. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is not a decision I think any of us either take lightly, or especially want to be making. I mean, I can totally see, it's a situation where I can kind of see both sides here. Obviously, I don't have dogs, I've had cats, I've got chickens, you know, nobody wants to take another being's life unnecessarily, including ACO Spencer, probably especially ACO Spencer. And this is a situation that, quite frankly, we should never have been in, in the first place. And it kind of ironically, we're kind of facing this situation now, rather than, maybe if we had made a different decision back in January, this ironically, either A, the dog might not be among us anymore right now anyway, or B, we would be facing a different discussion right now. I don't know exactly. Obviously, we can't, we can't change the past, and we can't predict the future very well. I would love to see giving the opportunity to find the dog a new home. I believe you have stated that you have talked to basically everybody that you can think of, and as you noted, our bylaws doesn't, don't allow for individual adoptions. Do you think that professionally speaking, would you, that if we were to take the time to change the bylaw, A, what kind of impact would that have on the dog over the next two or three months that it would take to do that? And B, do you think realistically, you would be able to find an individual household to take the dog in any reasonable length of time?
I see the dog self-mutilating itself to the point it needs medical attention, and again, it would be me administering that medical attention, which the dog does not allow. So that would be asking me to put myself in harm's way. You know, just going through the bylaw process that we just went through?
Yeah.
That was a two-year process?
Well, that was, that was a little exceptional.
It was, but that's how long it took.
Yeah, that was an unusual one.
We took off private adoption to take out the liability for the Town of Southbridge as well. By having private adoption, you are adding an expense, we would be responsible for spaying, neutering, vaccinating these animals before they would be able to go to a home, so you'd be asking for that. And realistically, finding an owner that is competent enough to follow the restrictions of the town order, bite history, pretty small, small percentage of chance of finding that when I have a hard enough time trying to find homes or rescues, or people interested in normal, healthy pit bulls, with no history.
If I may ask you, how many, roughly, how many pit bulls have you had to rehouse in the last year or so?
I don't have that number on me currently, I'd be more than happy to share that with you when I have my notebook in front of me, because I think the work that I do in finding these rescues, taking on these dogs that are difficult, it's rewarding in itself. But to date, I have intaked 418 animals since 2017. Majority of those are huskies and pit bulls.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Counselor Dow.
I agree with Counselor Joe Van, if we decide not to move forward, what's the next solution? Not to leave her hanging was the decision. Can we postpone the decision to the next meeting, then we can discuss what we're gonna do if the, if the, it didn't pass?
Counselor Adams.
I don't mean to go around and around here, Counselor Joe Van brings up a valid, very valid point, but that'd be something after the decision is made here, in my eyes. If it's made tonight, then you go, if it was to vote in favor of the motion, then that's the time when people who are talking, that includes me, works with the ACO and the chief to figure out, and the town manager to figure out a plan, or whatever it may be. But tonight, I just, I'm just recommending that we decide to vote.
Counselor Lazo.
Can you read the motion in its entirety? Why I think it's in the negative context instead of the positive context? Could you read the motion?
Clerk.
Which motion?
You read the motion, that's on the floor.
Oh, okay, the vote, just one second. I thought you called it this motion not to support the ACO.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think that's all, it just said motion not to support the ACO's recommendation.
That's correct, okay. So the motion on the floor and a second is to not follow the recommendation of the animal control officer. So you're right, it is.
Go ahead, Chair.
I'd like to amend that to not to support the, at this time, and postpone to October 4th. If Counselor Adams is gonna take the lead on this and wants to kind of find up a solution and work with the ACO, but it has to be on a short timeline, because a decision has to be made. So I would like to amend that.
So your motion is to postpone?
Well, his motion was.
You can't caveat except at a date.
Well, then we would, if, so, you're the problem on Terrian as well, if we, through the chair, question, if we say Counselor Adams' motion is not to support the animal control officer's decision, and that motion prevails, is there gonna be another motion afterwards, or it just goes on, you know, on? Or then it would take somebody's motion to reconsider his decision to bring it back to the council for further discussion? Am I correct on that, Counselor Lazo?
If I can bring you back to the original point, the motion in the negative, I've never seen that before. It's always motion to support, and then they don't support or they support. This is the first time I've ever seen, in 40 years, somebody go in the negative on a, on an agenda item. In other words, I'm gonna make a motion against the agenda item. Usually, there's an agenda item for something, and you vote against it. So I think that if the, if the counselor withdraws the negative motion and second, we could put a positive one, then it's in favor of the, or not in favor of. At that point, a pure motion to postpone, because you're not in favor of euthanization, and you think you can work on this problem on the short term, that would happen at that time.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm just suggesting that.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wouldn't that be the same thing, though? I made the motion, I understand, maybe 40 years, you never saw it, but, you know, I made the motion at that point in time, in the negative, not to support, not support the recommendation. So I don't see anything wrong with that motion itself, and it's, I think we're able to vote it.
Mr. Chairman.
In favor of, or not in favor of the motion itself. And I may be wrong.
There also wasn't a motion originally either, so there wasn't a motion.
Yeah, there was no motion.
There was no motion.
There is no motion?
There's not one in that agenda item, it's just a discussion.
And I understand that. I think you're getting yourself into a quagmire, that's what I'm saying.
The way the motion is stated, in order to not accept the ACO's recommendation, you'd have to vote in the affirmative. If you voted in the negative, to me, that would mean that you're accepting.
Correct.
The ACO's recommendation.
Right.
Which is awkward, but if.
I move a question.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion to move the question.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
He had it handed before the motion.
Go ahead.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, a question to move is not debatable. So you either have to take the vote, and if we wish to allow Counselor Marketti to continue discussion, you recognized the motion to move first, and there was a second, a valid second. If councils wish to allow Counselor Marketti to speak, then they should vote the motion to move now.
And motion to move, the question is not, not debatable.
Very good. So we have a motion.
Unless somebody is wanting to speak, you can't, you can't move a question if.
It's not debatable, Mr. Chairman, you have to take.
Not debatable.
No, it's not debatable. The motion to move is not debatable. So we have a motion to move the question. All those in favor? Hands up, please, so I can get a good count. That's eight out of nine. Counselor Marketti, I assume is against it. All those against?
I thought Joe was against it, too.
Joe, you raised your hand to move the question. Okay, so it's eight to one, the question is moved. So we have a question before the council to not accept the ACO's recommendation. It's my understanding that affirmative vote means you do not accept the ACO's recommendation. A vote in the negative means that you do accept the ACO's recommendation.
No, in reverse.
No, 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 that's correct, the motion that's at hand, it's not to support, is the motion at hand right now.
Yeah, yes, it's.
How do we do them in the bar?
Mr. Chairman.
It's backwards.
It's, it's an awkward phrase.
I would just like to say that, you know, although, I'm sure most of you don't want to hear from Mr. Zalinski, you did tell him.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, the question has been moved, if we want to vote it down.
The question has been moved, but everybody else up here has been talking, so if they're gonna talk, I'm gonna be allowed to talk.
We're gonna move the question, the question has been moved, it's coming to a vote.
No, can you, can you specify that one more time, because I'm confused.
Mr. Chairman, the, we've already voted on the question to move. The question has been moved, now you have to vote on the motion.
On the motion.
And I'm asking you, just a point of clarification, if I vote no.
If you vote no, you're supporting the ACO.
Thank you.
Okay, and no vote supports the ACO recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call, very good. Is everyone clear on the impact of their vote? A yes or a no?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
No.
I have three in the affirmative, six in the negative. That means that the motion fails, that the recommendation of the ACO will be followed. I would suggest that any definitive actions be withheld for 10 business days, which means October 12, 2021.
Motion to recess for five minutes, Mr. Chair.
Recess for five minutes. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the reappointment of David Adams as the town manager, town council delegate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, effective immediately through June 20, 2022, state ethics in good standing.
So move second.
Counselor Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see any references in the packet, is there a reason for that?
I can provide it to you afterwards.
Thank you very much.
Any discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present.
I'll abstain.
You abstain, I'm sorry. 801. Item 13, vote to confirm the appointment of Michael Marketti as the town manager, town council alternate delegate to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, effective immediately through June 20, 2022, state ethics in good standing.
So move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Sure.
Anyone opposed and abstaining? 801.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'd like to thank Counselor Marketti for stepping up on this. It's unfortunate, fortunate that we have two councils that do this, but it's unfortunate that we don't have, out of the town of 17,000 people, that individuals don't come out for these positions, and hopefully that's something we can change. Thank you.
Agenda item 15, vote to approve the town waiving its right of first refusal according to Mass General Law, Chapter 61 and 61A, SS Parcels 040-002-00001, C61, and 041-003-00001268, C1A, and 041-004-99991, C61, 268 and 348 Dresser Hill Road, the property.
So move second.
Discussion. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I actually think there, if will is here, I think there might be, there's something, this came up during general gov, I will say, this was made, this was moved forward with no recommendation from the general government subcommittee, but we did move it forward for the full council, but I know there's some things for, have to be corrected in the agenda item.
Yeah, I think what Counselor Ryan is attesting to is, the language here is the same as it was in the subcommittee, and I corrected it in the subcommittee, there's some script news errors, and the correct language, if you'd like me to read it, I can, and then I can give it to the appropriate party, so we should get it correct. It's vote to confirm that it waives its right of first refusal under Mass General Law, Chapter 61 and Chapter 61A, for the below referenced property. And below that, I can read it if you'd like, but it was in the memo that you all received, and it's in a table here. If you want me to read it, I will, but it may not be necessary if you don't.
Could you read it into the record?
Read it into the record, okay. All right, so parcel 040-002-001, area of property released for solar facility, 5,345 square feet, 0.1227 acres, the lien is under Chapter 61, it's, the recording information of the lien is in book 36599, page 345. Below that, parcel 041-003-00001, 529,764 square feet, 12.1617 acres, the lien is under Chapter 61A, recorded information of lien is book 56139, page 113, and then parcel 041-004-00001, 370,022 square feet, 8.4945 acres, the lien is under Chapter 61, recorded information of lien is book 36599, page 345. The total area of the proposed release for solar facility is 905,132 square feet, 20.7, I'm sorry, 20.779 acres.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conroy.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you reading that in.
I move that as an amendment.
I move that as an amendment.
I'm sorry?
I move that as amended motion.
Second.
We have an amendment on the floor. We need to vote that in. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. So we have an amended motion on the floor. Any discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I request a roll call.
Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the one thing I just wanted to point out is that this is something that, quite frankly, should have been done several years ago. It was, we did originally vote to, to waive our right of first refusal back in those, back in that day, with the numbers that we got from them that were all wrong. And now, that is quite frankly their lawyers' responsibility, we shouldn't even have to be doing this now. But there's been so many, as I mentioned to General Gov, there's been so many mistakes and screw-ups and problems with this particular project. So I am not surprised to see that we have to do this again because of their screw-ups. Um, I'm not in, I, I, this is, this is just ridiculous. And I'll be very glad to see, I, I, I'm glad to see from, if, if what Counselor Katrona has mentioned in the past couple of weeks about their, the new ownership of their, actually taking some responsibility, that would be nice, because we certainly haven't had any of it for the last couple of years.
Any other discussion? Very good, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16, vote to ratify the standard contract between the town of Southridge and Quincyman Community College, QCC, for the amount of $110,000 for police details and coverage for our Southridge site beginning September 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022.
So move second.
Discussion. Counselor Lazo.
Uh, this was brought up by a Subcommittee, and it was voted unanimously to ratify. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a quick question through you, Counselor Lazo, because unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting. Um, could you quickly summarize what the rationale is for even doing this? I mean, I know that, I know that Quincy has gone to, has started taking up space at the high school, but why is this necessary? I mean, we're not, we're not, hopefully they're not expecting
This is part of the security.
The Quincy kids to start getting into fights with the sites of top of high school kids.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but this is part of their security, and they're gonna have to, they're not sure they're gonna even be able to cover it themselves. And it was supposedly done through a grant, and the money that comes back in, we actually make money on it after we pay this. And so much per person. Uh, if the chief was here, he had the, uh, he's the one that did the presentation, it was a, it didn't, it didn't come out of our pocket, so.
Here comes the chief.
Oh, he's back, good.
So I didn't hear the question, if I could, Mr. Chair.
We're on item, uh, number 16, uh, to ratify the standard contract between the town of Southridge and Quincyman Community College for $110,000 for police details.
Yeah, and I was just, I was just asking that, since I wasn't able to make the PPP meeting, for kind of quick summary of why we need to do this, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me, but...
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, Quincy requested this service, we did not request this. They have a police officer assigned up there during the day, they have many, many issues with finding qualified personnel, they cannot fill these positions, they want somebody up there whenever the school's open, that's from seven in the morning to 11 at night. They requested our services, I told them we probably have a hard time filling it also. I also explained that all of our jobs in town in our community would be filled first, priority number one, Quincy is a secondary detail for us. That's where we're at, it's $110,000, and remember, the town gets a percentage of that, so for every eight hours that a police officer's up there, it's about almost $42 for every eight hours a police officer's at Quincy. They intend on, it's an administrative fee that we charge all private companies, including Quincy, so it's zero cost to the town. In fact, they're making money on it. But they want us up there, that's an agreement that they have with the Worcester, with the flagship campus, that they have police personnel on-site whenever their student's there. So again, not requested by me in any way.
They don't have their own campus police?
They do, but all they can fill is day shifts, they don't have any police officers that want to work the second shift.
Oh.
At the Southridge campus.
Okay.
So it's paid for by QCC, and the Southridge is, not that, not that it's all about money, but Southridge will be making money on this detail.
Thank you, Chief, any other discussion? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The chief, just curious, we have a hard time to find detailed officer because they're very busy. Are you gonna have issue, or when that school opened, then I think the winter, the detailing will more slow down to get officer down there, or you're gonna get a private company to, I don't know how, how that gonna work, because, you know, obviously, our officer, it's over work, is that what I hear on the meeting?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, we're having difficulty filling construction details, it's not unique to Southbridge, that's statewide, um, for whatever reason, I don't know why police officers, you know, it's not fair to a lot of them, because some of them are already working enough hours, so now we're doing forced overtime shifts, and they something that, I'm gonna be bringing something forward to PPP in the near future, um, regarding getting, uh, other personnel on the streets working details other than just full-time police officers. But for now, we've resolved some of our issues with traffic details in the community, we're moving people around, we're doing what's called priority details, where we flex police officers, the union's allowing us to do it, uh, we, we negotiated, we came to an agreement, um, where now, if, you know, eight police officers are needed for the day, we put them at priority locations. So if someone's on a street with less traffic, we move them to, to an area with more traffic. But as far as Quincy goes, just to be clear, this will not be filled until all of our local details are filled.
Thank you.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 17, vote to ratify the statement of work from the Department of Mental Health, master agreement, jail slash arrest division program effective July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, for a total not to exceed $22,000 to support up to eight to 10 police officers to attend crisis intervention training, and for reimbursement costs to conduct a mental health first aid MHFA training.
So move second.
Counselor Lazo.
Subcommittee voted unanimously to move it forward for ratification. Thank you. Chief.
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, quickly, this is a grant that we come back every year to the council for, for probably the last two or three years. It's paid for by the Department of Mental Health, and essentially this trains our police officers in dealing with people who are in crisis, the way we were doing it before was not working. Eventually, we hope to get 100% of our police officers trained, including myself, and right now, we're probably pushing a little more than 50% that have been trained. It's a 40-hour class, that, our training, this essentially covers the police officer to go to the training, and then someone to work that police officer's shift in Southbridge. All completely covered by this grant.
Good, good, any, Counselor Steves?
Just a friendly amendment, it's actually the jail and arrest diversion program, not division program, as the agenda says.
Oh, did I forget, misread that?
Yeah, the paperwork says diversion.
You are correct.
We're trying to keep them out of jail, not divide them, not divide them in jail.
Very good. Okay, did you get that?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number 18, vote to ratify the proposed contract for Morton Salt for the provision of treated salt for the base price of $74.85 per ton, to be funded from Snow and Ice Account Morton Salt was the lowest responsive bidder to the cooperative treated salt bid coordinated by the town of Austin.
So move second.
Counselor Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this was voted five to zero in favor of sending it to the full council for a vote.
Any discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Actually, do you have one question? Is this the same Morton that we like when you go to the store?
Yep.
Is it, is it the same Morton? Well, that's cool. Thank you. I just wanted to know.
When it rains, it pours. Item 19, vote to ratify change order number one to the contract with Ludlow Construction for South Street Transmission Main Improvements in the amount of $80,000. This change order will provide an $80,000 allowance against which flagger services may be charged when police details cannot be provided. This change order will be funded from the already approved Chapter 90 progress request, which included $156,000 for police details.
So move second.
Uh, Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this change order was approved five to nothing in favor of sending it to the full council for a vote.
Very good, discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 20, vote to ratify amendment number 17 to the contract with Gannett Fleming for pollution abatement at the DPW facility in the amount of $30,856. This amendment will cover design services necessary to address recent EPA comments. This amendment will be funded from the DPW Pollution Amendment Fund, fund is 0335, which shows a current balance to be obligated of $1,260,063.85.
So...
Mr. Marquetti, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this was voted five to nothing in favor of sending it to the full council for a vote.
Very good, discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 21, vote to ratify the contract with McClure Engineering in the amount of $253,890 for East Main Street Engineering Services, including oversight of up to 650 hours funded from project number 46881, East Main Street Water Main Replacing.
So move second.
Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this was voted five to zero in favor of sending it to the full council for a vote. I would like to make a note that the original recommendation was to award the contract to Stan Tech for 174,240. The DPW Subcommittee recommended awarding the contract to McClure Engineering for 250, 3,890, which included more oversight of the project. Although McClure was not the low bidder, on the project, they did include more oversight, and it was a concern of the committee that there is not enough oversight of road projects in town. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jovan?
Through you, through the town manager. Well, I, I do agree with oversight, does that, um, is that the ability for us to change a low bid on that procurement? Mass procurement laws state you have to take the lowest qualified bid, so therefore, does it meet the standards that we set out in the bid documents? And by awarding this the way that the DPW Subcommittee has recommended, does that open us up to an inspector general's inquiry as to not following procurement?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Counselor Jovan, there are certain professional services that are exempt from certain types of bidding requirements, and these types of professional services, I think you'll find, fall within that category, so when they got back these quotes, my understanding here was that we were not required to take the actual lowest quote, and I think, um, because it's typically in the area that DPW deals with more frequently, Ms. Blakely could add to that, but I could just find you, there's a, at the very front of Chapter 30B, it'll take me one minute to find it, there is a detailed list of exempted services, such as trash collection, legal services, there's a fair amount, and I'm 99% positive that these types of engineering services, along with architectural services, are exempt, and I know Ms. Blakely is nodding her head, I can get you the chapter and verse within a minute.
I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I certainly, if you believe that that's the case, I trust you on your chief procurement, I just, I, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the DPW Subcommittee meeting, so I didn't have the opportunity to ask, so just want to make sure, as long as we're following mass procurement laws, I have no problem with additional oversight, even though it's a little bit more money, but we want to make sure that the job is done correctly. Thank you.
Very good.
I, I would like to mention that it was discussed, one of the reasons it was also discussed, and there's many different ways we do look at this when we evaluate them, but when, on an hour, a dollar per hour basis, McClure also had the lowest effective rate. So we do that calculation so that we can kind of see that. So I will say, when you looked at how many hours they proposed versus the rate they came up for the lowest effective rate, so there's many different ways we can look at these contracts. We can say we awarded it on lowest effect rate, but again, engineering is exempt from that Chapter 30B procurement.
Thank you.
It's in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 1, which Section 1 says this chapter shall not apply to, under Section 1, subsection B, and when you get down to 32A, it says contracts with architects, engineers, and related professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I couldn't attend that meeting either that night, but I did watch the DPW meeting, and I just want to thank the DPW Subcommittee, along with the department head and the town manager on this discussion, I thought it was really good. I, I, I had questions of why it was a 60, almost a $60,000 difference between the two, and that we would take something like that, but after listening to the discussion and all that, uh, let's hope that there's not a lot of change orders with this organization as we move forward, but I also know, and not naive, that things do change, and we have to be flexible with that. Uh, one thing I wanted to ask is, when I'm looking at the prices that you guys broke down, why such the big disparity? So I look at design services, McClure's $90.22, where Stan Tech's 136, some, somewhere like 40, 50, 60 dollars different per hour.
I think some of that is the size of the firm, and where the firms are located, there are different, um, and I will also say that I think when you use some of these large firms, you might not always be paying for their expensive staff's completely, complete review, where they might allocate a couple hours, four hours or six hours to look at the project, when they really might be spending 12, but they have a lot, they put that to the overhead, versus I think McClure, being a smaller firm, can't afford to have as high of an overhead rate, so they, you see more of the higher rate hour, or more hours total on the project. Um, I've worked in both of these firm, both of these types of firms in the past, I understand that that's how they work, um, and how they look at getting projects. So, smaller firms, you're going to see more of what actual hours take on a project, larger firms are gonna figure out how many hours they think they can actually bill you for a project.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, thank you, Mr. Chair, just last thing, I know, when I was watching the, the YouTube video, the construction starts in June of 2022?
So, right now, we aren't, as a council, you haven't funded all of the money towards this project yet, so we're assuming that we're going to have to go through a cycle of capital. That also will depend on if we decide to use ARPA funds, because we might have those funds available sooner than if we had to go through a capital planning process and wait until that planning was done. So we're hoping that we'll have all the bids in and know exactly what we need to find.
Okay, thank you, I just, I know 5 through 15K Street's being done right now as well, so I know they're probably not gonna be done by that time, I'm sure you're working something out with them, or is it gonna interfere or anything between your work and his work? And I, this may be, this is really maybe on a side conversation or something like that, I just, I thought about it when I was watching the meeting. It really doesn't pit to the agenda, we're voting on the funds, so I'll, I'll give you a call.
Any other discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, I just want to say that there better not be any change orders, because we were sold on McClure, because we, your words, we were locking in the cost of oversight, so locking in...
For 650 hours only.
All right.
And I can't guarantee anything for the design services, but the locking in of the price at that rate for 650 hours. After that, I, you can't guarantee anything. If it goes past 650 hours, you're gonna get a change order, because it's over 650 hours.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, but hopefully they have detail where the one was all these hours and approved.
You're going to have, you're gonna have...
Who tracked their hour?
They're gonna give us... They're going to give us payroll of how many hours they have.
And who's going to track? Is that correct or not?
There is some professional liability there that they have to be tracking them correctly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good, all those...
A quick comment. From their proposal, it specifically states that they are assuming 26 active weeks of construction with oversight to be five days a week for five hours a day. That's what they say.
Anything else? Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item 22, vote to adopt the Mullins Rule, adoption of Mass General law, Chapter 39, Section 23D. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Oh, you need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Okay, we have a first, I have a motion and a second.
And then, yeah, it was recommended by the General Government Subcommittee. And I'll let Counsel Marquetti speak to it more, because he spoke at a great length, and he was the reason that we had this discussion, so I'll hand it off to him.
Thank you. Counselor Steves also wanted this on the agenda. It came down to, actually Counsel Dow and I were at a planning board meeting, and they were missing one person because they were sick, and an agenda item came up. It was someone that wanted to do a project. They needed five votes to do the project. They only have five members there. So they were going to have to postpone the meeting or table it until the next meeting, but at the next meeting, even if the person who was sick and not there was there, they could not vote on this item. So they asked us, could see if you could do anything to get the Mullins Rule passed, which would allow the person who was sick to read, or, I'm sorry, look at the recording, look at all the evidence, and able to discuss and vote on the item, even if they were not at that meeting. And that's what the Mullins Rule allows. Thank you.
I will also just clarify that it only applies to one meeting in that set of hearings. So they cannot miss all of the hearings and then show up and look at the, say, I looked at the evidence. It's only one meeting to help alleviate a situation that we had with not only this one, but also Conservation Commission, and also expressed concern about it, so.
I think the ZBA has too, but they don't have as many hearings.
Counsel Jovan, then.
Counsel Adams.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Counsel. One thing I noticed, that we didn't have any paperwork on this this evening, but I will state that I believe the town manager noted that we would be required, I believe, maybe talking to council, that we would be required to vote on this first, to accept it, and then get the specific language in there. I believe that's what it was, or am I off there?
So when, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counselor Adams, at the GenGov Subcommittee that we had a ways back, there was questions about the Mullins Rule, the procedure, and there were conditions that the Subcommittee wanted to place, because we didn't want to do, when I say we, I'm talking about the town collectively, did not want to have transcripts. They wanted to have the authority essentially of the Subcommittee Chair to determine that, and then make sure that they were, you know, following certain conditions that were over and above what were in the Mullins Rule. So Town Council said the process should be that we adopt this first, and then we go either amend any existing bylaw or create a new bylaw to specify the conditions that the town wanted.
Right. What he said.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, I guess, to the town manager. So by adopting this by the council this evening, if we were to adopt this, it doesn't go and affect it right away? There's next steps to this? Is that, is that what it was, to lay out the procedure and the process? Because, I mean, there is nothing, I certainly understand it, I respect the fact that we need to do something, but we absolutely, we're asked to be voting on adopting a rule with no policy or procedure in place as to how that's going to be implemented. So what is, so what are we going to do as far as, so that there's consistency across whatever board uses the Mullins Rule or has the ability to use the Mullins Rule? What process so that standardizes? Is it a recording? Is it a video recording? Is it written transcript? You know, so that we don't have chairmen of different boards say, well, let's take the minutes and you can just review the minute. I know there's detailed things that have to be done for this, but we really, if we, I'm not comfortable voting on this this evening without knowing what the process that we're going to implement is, because we have too many things going on that we don't have click cut processes, you know? We had a call this evening that was very difficult, but I think with technology, there's ability to do it better. So I just would want to see how we're going to develop this process before I vote to accept this rule. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Ryan, then Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I wish you had missed, come to one of the multiple meetings we had on this topic, because we brought this up multiple times. I actually pushed for more meetings so we could have more time to discuss things like that, and we actually did talk about that. And the reason was exactly as the manager pointed out. The legal advice was we need to pass the rule first and then work on the process. That was the interpretation we were given at GenGov, which is why we recommended this go forward with the acceptance of the MGL. So I just want that clear for the record, that based on legal advice we had gotten from the manager, this was the process we were advised to take. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to that.
Certainly.
First off, I don't need a lecture about not being able to attend meetings. I attend many meetings. There are other issues, family issues, that I was unable to attend your General Government meetings, but I attend many meetings and try to follow up. Typically, when a rule is asked for us to adopt, we have some background information. I have no minutes to review here to say that this was the adoption of this. There's nothing in our packet that says this is what it's going to be done. And your simple explanation when you presented this was to defer to Counsel Marquetti. So therefore, I'm respectfully asking if we want to adopt that, and I asked the town manager, if we adopt this this evening, does it go in effect, or do we do the process? Typically, if you're going to adopt something, you have the processes available as well. I don't understand how you adopt a rule and then say, hey, that's like passing Pelosi's bill that says, let's adopt it, and then read it after it's adopted. No, that's not how it works. Good government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I wish I remember the whole meeting, but I think the planning board explained it enough at that meeting. It's very important to pass this one, because they having hard time to move things forward in a better-for-the-town project and other things. So if we keep delaying things, we're never going to be able to get things done in this town. You know, I understand family issue, I understand lot of, I respect that, but still, we have to move things forward. And I think they discussed it when me and Counsel Marquetti down there, and that's why I think Counsel Marquetti move it forward, to be able to continue moving better project in this town. So I think we should move forward and vote for it and done with it. We can't keep delaying things when we have more important thing to keep worry about it. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo.
Councillors, with all due respect, I was at that meeting, I'm in favor of this rule, but Counselor Jovan is 1,000% right, because unless we put provisions or amendment to hold this till we get the policy, the thing is, you know, you go to a lot of meetings, they're all busy, they're all late, you're working, everybody's trying to do the right thing. I don't think anybody's against the Mullins Rule. I think the point of clarification that Counsel Jovan brings to the table is, okay, we vote this tonight, which board interprets it to their liking? It's kind of vague. I mean, if you're willing to go into kind of a, I want to say a mix-and-match mode and make the policy, that's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. I was under the impression that this wouldn't go in to affect immediately, and that we'd work on the policy. So we did put the cart before the horse, and you're right, Mr. Counsel Jovan, I think what has to happen is, if you're going to implement something, I mean, MGL, Chapter 39, S23D, is pretty explicit on what it is. I don't know, I'm kind of mixed feelings on it. I just, I know that we're going to have to write something into our policy and bylaws to, to the town manager. When you adopt the Massachusetts General law, is it as written and that's it? Or do we tailor it?
So my understanding is, if we adopt it, and it says right there, upon adoption, acceptance by this section, one or more types of adjudicatory hearings, a member of any municipal board when holding that shall not be disqualified. So it explains it right there, and I could, I did previously share this, I want to say, I read it aloud at the Subcommittee meeting, that Town Council said the statutory codification of the so-called Mullins Rule, General Law 39, Section 23D, is a local acceptance statute which may be accepted by a vote of the Town Council. In council's opinion, council with an SEL, the Town Council's vote to adopt the local acceptance cannot be subject to qualifications. Therefore, it must be simply voted to accept or not accept. Thereafter, however, the statute does allow municipalities that have accepted the provisions of this to enact bylaw establishing minimal additional requirements for the attendance at scheduled board, committee, and commission hearings. And in council's opinion, the conditions that I set out in the email could be included in such bylaw. And the conditions at the time that Madam Chairwoman of the GenGov Subcommittee asked me was that the chairperson would have the choice of either a recording or audio, no such transcript, that all recordings be kept until the statute of limitations regarding the retention of such meeting documents had expired, and that any individual member may invoke this exemption no more than three times per year. So based on council's response, they said that in their opinion, those conditions could be included in such a bylaw. But again, to recap, he said we must first either accept or not accept the statute after that, and then go forward with the bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Tom Manager.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I will also take the time to read the section, since it's pretty short, so that way there's no issues around transparency. Section 23D, adjudicatory hearings, attendance by municipal board, committee, and commission members voting disqualification. Section 23DA, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary upon municipal acceptance of this section for one or more types of adjudic, it's a hard word, adjudicatory hearings, members, a member of a municipal board, committee, or commission when holding an adjudicatory hearing shall not be disqualified from voting in the matter solely due to that member's absence from no more than a single session of the hearing at which testimony or other evidence is received. Before any such vote, the member shall clarify in writing that he or she has examined all evidence received at the missed session, which evidence shall include an audio or video recording of the missed session or a transcript thereof. The written certification shall be part of the record of the hearing. Nothing in this section shall change, replace, negate, or otherwise supersede applicable court requirements. B, by ordinance or by bylaw, a city or town may adopt the minimum additional requirements for attendance at school, at scheduled board, committee, and commission hearings under this section.
Counsel Lazo.
That's pretty explicit, pretty to the point. I think if we're willing to make it a bylaw, I think we got to just write that language in or maybe tweak it, but that is pretty clear.
Counsel Jovan.
Part B says by ordinance or bylaw, which does say you could adopt the bylaw, a city or town may adopt minimum additional requirements for attendance at scheduled board, committee, and commission hearings under this section. Doesn't say anything about the process by which they're going to record those meetings or gather evidence. That's my point. Two parts there. Read the second part. By ordinance or bylaw, which the town manager is saying, you could adopt the bylaw, but all it says is a city or town may adopt minimum additional requirements for attendance at the scheduled board, committee, and commission hearings under this section. End of sentence. Doesn't say anything about what manner you're going to record it in, what testimony you're going to take, or how you're going to adopt that stuff. So that's my only, I have no problem with the Mullins Rule. I just want to make sure that every board and commission that operates in this town, if we adopt it, is following all the rules so that if that board makes a decision and is challenged in court for that decision, we followed all the requirements that we asked them to set up. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
I'm just, could respond to Counsel Jovan. I would think that if the law is silent on whether or not we can set specific requirements for what the recordings look like, then that allows us to do it. Under local, under the local, under the local rule, you know, the way the way the state sets up that we allow, are allowed to make our own rules that don't contradict state law.
Am I misunderstanding what the chairman read? Audio or video? Or transcript? To me, if you, it's like seeing a Subcommittee meeting. If you see it, you were there. Audio would be probably not as good, but I think for the intent of what we're going to be doing, because of the absence of members, I think that would cover it. Unless I'm missing something.
Make a motion to move the question. Is a motion to move the question. All those in favor? Very good, the question is moved. All those in favor of adopting the Mullins Rule?
Request a roll call?
I'm sorry.
Since this is an adoption of a Mass General law.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
No.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Jovan.
No.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
And Counsel Steves.
Yes.
I have seven affirmative, two negative. The motion passes. Item number 23, vote to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-406, owners, agents of property abutting required to remove snow by law. To read that snow removal time from the sidewalks be increased from 12 hours to 24 hours and hold three readings as recommended. Second. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously of the Subcommittee to support.
Very good. Does the council, does the council wish me just to read the change, or should I read the entire bylaw?
Just read the change. Just, I'm here with the change.
Read the amendment.
Read the amendment, very good. Section 7-406, owners, agents of property abutting sidewalks required to remove snow. No owner or agent of an owner of premises abutting upon brick, concrete, or other curbed or other finished sidewalk shall place or suffer to remain for more than, strike 12 hours, and insert 24 hours upon secession of the snow storm, any snow upon such sidewalk. That's the, that's the amendment. Okay? Does anyone wish to comment on that? Very good. Item 24, council's form, let's start right here. Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had two quick things. One is that I would like to mention that if you, you might have seen it in the classifieds, there is going to be a virtual community outreach meeting regarding Lab X, which is a marijuana testing lab facility that's going in over on 393 East Main Street here in town. This is a Zoom hearing, so I can try to read this. I don't know if, I don't know if you can probably, I don't know if you can focus in eye, because it's just tiny typeface, but...
[inaudible]
Probably not. I can maybe, maybe I can give it to you and put it on the scroll. Yeah, you can't read that. Okay, I'll try to read it. It's a HTTPS colon, double backslash, USO2web dot... It's a HTTPS colon double blacks, double backslash USO2web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eight six five seven four one eight two three six two. And that's how you can get into it. The time is going to be at, where'd it go? September 28th at 6:30 PM. So that's tomorrow night. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, oh yeah, this Saturday, the second, the Dudley Grange is doing its day-long annual Apple Fest. So if you like apples and music and a bunch of other stuff, you can show up there. If you're more into herbs, the South, the Sturridge Herb Fest is going on at the Sturridge Senior Center at the same time. And also on Thursday, the 7th at 6:30, the Library is doing a photo reception for Janet McDonald's new art show. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Katrona.
Nothing this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. There'll be another capital improvement, capital planning committee meeting for October 7th, Thursday, for Counsel Lozo and Dow, 6:00 PM. I hope you can make it. It will be in the Veterans Room. I'd also like to mention that at my DPW Subcommittee meetings, I have been allowing Citizens Forum, and I did get a call from the chairman the other day that maybe I should not allow this debate going back and forth during Citizens Forum. And I have to admit that that's probably something that I should not allow. So I'm not going to stop having Citizens Forum because I believe it is in the council rules and the town charter. But I would ask that when a citizen has something that they bring forward that the town manager and the department has just not debate with them on it, take down their concerns and get back to them later on it. So I, I apologize if, if they've gotten out of, out of hand, but I'll try to keep a little bit tighter control of Citizens Forum in the future. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I only have one thing tonight, and I just want to bring a WRTA update to the council. We just had a presentation over, at the last WRTA meeting, over on some of the statistics around the fare free and whether or not it was actually having a substantial impact on a return to ridership. Happy to report that it is. We are finding that our WRTA is the most used RTA, and also that we have found that the overall, sir, we have seen 85% of our riders returned back compared to any other RTA that I was looking at closer to 50 to 55%. So this program is working. We're going to be having further discussions about whether or not we're going to extend that. If we are going to extend that, we're going to be talking about whether temporarily in the future, it's going to be just with the continuing use of CARES funds that we have received as an RTA. And if, as we go forward, we're going to be looking for more long-term solutions, legislative fixes to help provide more funding to the RTAs so that way this is a concept that can continue to spread. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Lozo.
I'd just like to thank the town manager and the DPW on the Glover Street project. There's a veteran, three-time Purple Heart and Wife over there that has had a trying time, and I think that the project looks fantastic, and thank you very much. Job well done, TM. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lozo. Counsel Ado.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a citizen call me today for Grace Line. The weather destroyed the road and nobody's, something wrong with the road there's? If we can take a look at it, DPW.
So.
Grace Line.
Grace Lane.
Can you?
Lane.
Can you email the town manager with the specifics of that so that he can look into it for you?
And also on Facebook, somebody posted on Mechanics the job they did on the road. So I'm not sure if somebody else checking that from the DPW to see if they did, you know, good job because it looks like a mess, you know? People making fun of on the, on the Facebook. Thank you.
Very good.
I, I just, Mr. Chairman, I drove over to Mechanics Street today from, from Charlton Street down to the Southbridge Conference Center, and it, it looked, you could tell it was, it had been done over. It looked rather nice. It rode nice, so I'm not sure what the issue was. But if you email me the, the two things, I'll be happy to look.
Counsel Jovan.
Yeah. First, Mr. Chairman, could you update us on when we're going to have the joint School Committee Town Council meeting so that we can get those members appointed? Is that on the agenda?
I'm in contact with the committee chair, Andrew Murch, and we're trying to arrange a date when we can be certain that there will be a quorum. I understand that's going to be in the very recent, well, not recent, but near future. I can't give you an exact date at this point, but it'll be in short order.
If that is the case, that they cannot get a quorum, could we get some kind of advice from, even a quick call to legal counsel that says, hey, if they can't make their quorum, we have two individuals that want to serve this community? Again, if we want to move out of receivership, we have to show that we're going to get a school committee that's functioning. We have individuals that are stepped up. It's not fair to them. They'll just walk away. So we have quality people. It's not fair. We keep asking for people to serve, and then we don't appoint them. So if you could do that. Through you to the town manager, could you give us, could you just ask the police chief if the town has set trick-or-treat dates because other towns are announcing it, and if we could get that out so that people know whether in fact we are going to do it because all the towns are lining up, I just, just so we can push out that information? And finally, the town manager had alluded to, just real quickly, on the Fire Station Building Committee, if we can indulge, I'm pleased that we had eight firms that put in their proposals for, to be owners' project managers for our project. There are some very good firms that are there, including the firm that did the oversight for our middle school, high school. It's a new name, but the principal there, one of the principals there was deeply involved in our school building projects. So we will be meeting this week on Thursday to review those proposals and determine how many firms we wish to interview. Then over the following two Thursday nights, we are scheduled interviews. Anybody, counselors are invited to sit in on those, interviews with those firms as we select the owners' project manager to. We always talk about oversight, accountability, big word. And if we find the right firm for this project, anything like what we had for the middle school, high school, on time, under budget, then we'll be in a good place. And some of those firms, a lot of their prior projects, they've come in under budget. So we're looking forward to working with that. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to thank Southbridge Business Partnership again for a great Autumn Fest had by all, and it was a great event. We were out there all day. So quite a few people came by and it was great to showcase our town. I just wanted to let the counselors know that I'll be briefing the Town Council this Monday, this coming Monday, on the Curbside Collection. Basically, it's just a refresher of what we had last year and with some updated figures from the assessor's office, and that way we can move forward with the decision here very soon of what path we want to take with Curbside. And I want to thank the town manager working with me and a few others, getting this thing moving forward again. So appreciate it. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Next meeting is Monday, October 4th, 7:00 PM, right here in the dais.
Very good. I have a motion to adjourn. Second. Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous.
It's missing a German. It's missing a German.